Beside the Great Hall. Mobile's phones are to be turned off or put on silent for the direction of the meeting. Having said that, I think I'd better check my own. Good start. As a reminder, we are utilizing the queuing functionality available on the microphone system. Members wishing to speak should indicate their intention by pressing the right-hand button on the microphone to automatically be added to the queue. The queue will be visible on the microphone console screen and I will invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Microphones will be activated and deactivated automatically. Item one, apologies. To receive the apologies for absence. Members' apologies have already been received and are currently being displayed on the large screens in front of you. Are there any additional apologies? councillor, sorry. So councillor Irish has said his apologies, thank you. Thank you very much. Any others? Moving on. Yes. Right, have we got that? I don't think your microphone is on, that was all. Any other apologies? Thank you. Moving on to item two. Declaration of interest. All members who believe they have a disposable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest and having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5, the county council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with para 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider having regard to part five, paragraph four of the code. Whether such interest should be declared and have regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Now, members, I'm aware that a number of you are members of local district and borough councils and may wish to declare personal interest as such. The monitoring officer wrote to you yesterday to confirm that a personal interest would not prevent you from taking part in the debate and decision-making. If you wish to declare a personal interest as a member of a local district or borough council, I invite you to do so using the voting buttons on your microphone console. And I have twenty-six councillors who've done that and those will obviously be recorded. It's going up to twenty-eight. Number of dual hatters. Apart from those interests, have any members, any other interests that they wish to declare at this time? Okay, moving on to chairman's announcements. I have no formal announcements, but I will mention a couple of things to do with the debate that we're having as part of our extraordinary council meeting this morning. Length of speaking. I suspect there'll be a lot of speakers, so I will be applying the strict adherence to four minutes and I will remind everybody thirty seconds before their four minutes are up. Secondly, I intend to have a lunch break at one o'clock, but I will at around half past twelve see how the debate is going and if it looks as if it's coming to an end, and is likely to finish before one thirty, we will extend the morning session up until one thirty. Moving on to item four, which is the main business. Our main business this morning, the English devolution white paper. What I'm proposing is that we have a variation to standing orders that you've already been informed about, to adjust the length of speakers, so that we actually have the same process as we have during a budget debate. And I will now shortly ask the leader to propose the motion. And afterwards, straight afterwards, I invite questions effectively of clarification. I would remind members to make the questions succinct and ensure that we don't repeat the questions if they've already been answered, so that we can get on to the main business, which is the debate. So may I at this stage ask the leader of the council to propose... Oh, thank you, thank you David. Yes, do you all agree to the change in standing orders so they're more equivalent to the ones that we've adopted? Thank you very much. The leader.
Mr Chairman, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. I'm sorry to drag you in here on the first week of New Year. It's been a very interesting Christmas and New Year since the week before Christmas with the announcement of the white paper and I am, as of this morning, wondering whether it was such a good idea to engage in Dry January. Mr Chairman, before... Mr Chairman, before I formally propose the motion, can I make a couple of quick updates for people or suggestions? The first is that I hope that you have noticed from the email yesterday and the update on moderngov that there was an addendum to these papers which made an alteration to clause C. That was a change which took out the words effectively that we would look to deliver local government reorganization proposals and we would change that to developing. And the reason that we changed that was that very clearly this is not just a decision for us and it is not in our power to deliver those, although it is our responsibility to deliver them formally to government once some proposals have been put together. But clearly that is something about which we will need to continue discussions with our neighbours in the two cities, with the Isle of Wight and with all eleven of our district and borough and city councils, so that we can take that forward. So I hope that you are aware of that and are happy with that amendment. Two other things as well about the procedure when we get to the point of making a decision. The first, Mr Chairman, is that I would propose that we take all of the amendments separately, sorry, all of the clauses separately, all of the recommendations separately, and similarly the amendments, if any, apply to a clause individually alongside each clause at that time, although of course all of the amendments being put forward as a block so far. The second thing, Mr Chairman, if council is happy to agree, I would suggest that each of those votes are recorded. So I think you were going to ask that, but I think they've just said that for you, so...
Is that you're all in agreement with what the leader suggested? Thank you very much.
Mr Chairman, thank you. So, colleagues, I think we should be very clear that the decision today we are about to make is profound. It is probably the most significant decision that we will make as a council and certainly the most significant decision that we have made as a council since the nineteen nineties. If we decide to engage with this programme, it will fundamentally change the way in which local government is delivered in Hampshire. It will essentially mean that this body will at some point in the next few years cease to exist and similarly, it is likely that the districts and boroughs that form the second tier beneath us will be in a similar position. What it does do however though is offer us enormous opportunity. This is just the beginning of a journey. We are not making a decision today that definitively decides exactly what that eventual outcome looks like. What it does do is put us on the road to that eventual decision. And as you might have seen, this is a journey that whilst I believe around devolution we should be taking, there are still many unknowns about the other aspects that are attached to it, yet these are linked together by the government. They are very clear that we should be going down this route and there is not a do-nothing option here. My personal view, very clearly, is that we should be engaging with the process proactively so that we can control it as best we can and make sure that we attune it to the needs of Hampshire, of our residents and of our businesses. It's rather like being in a car where the government have the control of the accelerator and the brake. And so by taking the decision to join the devolution priority programme, I believe that at least gives us a chance to have some influence on the steering wheel. So in terms of the proposals that you have in front of me, let me take them individually. We will be engaging in engaging with the devolution priority programme, committing ourselves to something which I think is positive for our area. Devolution brings with it an elected mayor and it is very clear that the government is set on having elected mayors in each area of the country. We may not like that idea, we may certainly not like the idea that somebody with the title mayor is placed in at least a semi-rural county such as Hampshire, but that is what it's called and that is the process that the government have required us to undertake and it did appear in their manifesto. So the creation of a combined authority and the creation of a mayor are part of that devolution journey. Let me just take a moment to explain to you and to anybody watching what that means. So a combined authority is not a new council, it's not a new group of people who have been elected, the only elected person in that process directly will be the mayor. However, the combined authority is the body that supports the mayor and helps make the decisions that are undertaken in their name. And that will be comprised of the leaders of currently the upper-tier councils, the four upper-tier councils that would be part of the area and would also include potentially others, most likely to be the leaders of some of the lower-tier councils as well, the second-tier councils. The reason I'm talking about it being, using the current structure of local government in Hampshire is that we would be establishing it using the governance that we currently have. Because the government would require us to consider local government reorganization later. So we're basically saying yes to devolution first and we are then looking at local government after that. And the process of taking that journey is a transformative one for us. Devolution means taking powers from central government and being able to enact them locally. It means that we can begin to look much more strategically at our area, we can begin to make decisions that are more appropriate to the residents and businesses we serve. It means that we are able to influence better what... The various powers and the various government, sorry, the various powers that impact them. And you will find in paragraphs twenty-seven, twenty-six and twenty-seven of this report, details of what those powers might be. And I've picked out a few of them just to mention so that you have a sense of the kind of things that we would be talking about. So we would have under a mayoral combined authority access to multi-departmental long-term integrated funding settlements. That's what's just been given to Manchester and is under consideration for some of the other mayoral areas who are already in existence. What that means is that there is better and more sustainable and more understandable funding for the area. There'd be a long-term investment fund with an agreed annual allocation, money for us to invest in our services, in our infrastructure, in the various improvements that we need to ensure continued growth in Hampshire and the Solent. In terms of leadership, we would have our mayor sit on the membership, on the Council of Nations and Regions. That is something that the new government has established and what they've been, and one of the reasons why we are looking at this particular footprint. Why they want us to have a footprint that is significantly larger than perhaps some of us might have anticipated is that they want that mayor to be able to sit alongside the first ministers of the devolved nations and to be able to sit with a parity of responsibility and of area behind them. If you consider the fact that Hampshire and the Solent has a population of two-point-two million, we have more residents than Northern Ireland. If you think about the gross value-added element of our economy... If you think about the gross value-added element of our economy which approaches 70 billion, we are almost at the same level of economy as Wales. So a mayor representing Hampshire and the Solent could quite legitimately sit alongside those First Ministers and be able to say that they represent an area that has a similar weight and a similar significance. In terms of transport, we would have much greater control over many of our local transport issues. We would be able to establish key routes, we would be able to be engaged with the railways, we would be able to look much more effectively at the way in which public transport operates. Active travel, transport planning would be integrated in that area. And one of the examples that I've used is to say that when a member of the public from councillor Cooper's division in Romsey Town gets on the bus at Romsey Bus Station and travels into central Southampton, the point at which they cross into Southampton City Council area at Baker's Drove in Nurseley is the point at which Hampshire County Council no longer becomes responsible for their journey and Southampton City Council does. But they don't care, they don't notice that. What they're interested in is getting from Romsey to Southampton on time, in comfort and without any delay. And so it makes complete sense to me that we should be looking across that. Skills and employment support, you will notice that there's a whole range of different items there. We are able to obtain access to supported employment funding, co-design of future employment support and it's additional to the core Job Centre plus provision. These are the kind of powers that we need and having chaired the Hampshire Prosperity Partnership Board on Monday, I can confirm that our partners in the business world support us in the respect that what we want to be able to do is to offer opportunity to the people in the most deprived parts of our county. By doing that, by helping those people to access skills, to access training, to access jobs and helping them get there by using the integration of public transport that I've just described, that begins to change their lives. And when we change the lives of the people who are most deprived in our community, we all benefit, all of us across the county. Housing and strategic planning, something that for all of us who are dual hatters is pretty important for us at the minute. We are all grappling with the fact that the government is requiring us to find more housing and being able to discuss it on a pan Hampshire basis has got to be a good thing. So giving the combined authority strategic development management powers, the ability to raise mayoral community infrastructure levies, to help us with the delivery of infrastructure, to establish a mayoral development corporation to help us deliver the kind of housing and the kind of development that we require is helpful. And the thing that's most interesting to me is to take over alongside them some of Homes England's compulsory purchase powers. I'm sure that councillor Cooper and I would love to see those applied to the Romsey Brewery site. A strategic place partnership with Homes England. What this helps us do, what this will help the combined authority do is to deliver the kind of homes that the people of Hampshire need in the right places with the right infrastructure around them. Economic development and regeneration, working to again enhance the growth of our area, working to invest in the right sectors, working to support our business sector in ensuring that that growth helps those deprived areas most and helps us all in terms of the delivery of that growth. And in terms of environment and climate change, there are various powers for us in terms, for the combined authority in terms of being able to attract funding for retrofit, coordination of heat networks, being involved in green jobs and skills, coordinating that, and looking at the delivery of local nature recovery strategies, something that is going to become increasingly important, not least as we begin to provide more development in what must be, as a consequence of the numbers, the countryside. And then finally, health and wellbeing and public service reform. So this for me is one of the greatest opportunities that we have and I think this is one of the areas where we must, once established, begin to push to have even greater powers because having a mayoral combined authority that can begin to work much better with the NHS, who can begin to really affect change in the way in which we deliver social care. The government have kicked the can down the road yet again with saying that they won't actually bring forward their reforms until their inquiry has been completed in 2028. That's too late for us all, it's too late for the people who are unable to leave hospital and are waiting for beds in care homes, it's too late for the people who are unable to access beds in hospital to be able to, to be able to obtain the care that they need. We could and must, and we could and should and must, work much better with the NHS and this begins to provide us with the powers to be able to do that. And finally, because none of us like politicians, what this does also do is ensure that the police and crime commissioner's role is folded into the mayoralty. I'm not saying we dislike the police and crime commissioner, but what I'm saying is that there's, what I'm saying is that the role itself is put there. So what this does is to bring powers and money from government closer to the people, it takes powers from the upper tier authorities and places it at a strategic level where we can properly undertake reform and improvement across our entire area without having to worry about some of the boundaries upon which we currently are divided. In order to do this, the government also requires us to agree to begin the process of looking at local government reform. I've been a unitary councillor, I spent seven years as a unitary councillor, I can tell you that it is a lot easier than having to think about whether it's my responsibility or one of my colleagues in the districts or boroughs. But that said, it also means that there is a much greater burden upon the individual to deal with it. Makes it simpler for the public and the government are again pretty clear that we're on this course and there is no option that does not include local government reform. All of those open to us eventually end up in this place. We have begun the discussions with the districts and boroughs to make sure that they are fully up to date with how we might begin to go about this and I think what we have ahead of us is a intense and a difficult and a really detailed discussion around how we might be able to redraw those boundaries across Hampshire. You will hear later from councillor House that he has a concern, as we have seen from his amendment, around the optimum size that the government is requiring us to look at. I agree with that, I think 500,000 people takes us too far away from the people that we serve. But we are required to do this in any of the three options available to us. And actually taking this route that we are suggesting today in terms of joining the devolution priority programme means that we have the longest in which to submit our The government have not defined what autumn means to them. All of our experience of the government's version of autumn means, it normally means December, so let's hope they apply that to us as well. But if we were to go down either of the other routes they suggest, we would either have to provide our finalised plans by September or quite possibly by May. And one of the criticisms that I know many of you have of this process, and it's one that I share, is that it appears entirely rushed. We had the proposed White Paper on December the 16th. We, Hampshire and the Solent, had our meeting with the local government minister on December the 17th. And in that she made very clear a number of points which mean that we must engage with our city neighbours as well. Being that the two cities are unable to stay as they are, they must expand outwards, there is an expectation that the new authorities that would be created would be based upon the existing district and borough boundaries and that while there is a preference for the Isle of Wight to join with one of the mainland authorities to create a bigger unit, they may have unique circumstances that enable them to remain separate. I have to say that my view is that the island is entirely unique and there is no good reason to my mind to try and pair it with the mainland because the needs of the two areas of that council where it to be formed would be far too disparate and difficult. But it does mean that we have a lot to do and it does mean that we have the longest time in which to do it and it means that we've got the longest time to do it as well and as properly and as collectively and collegiately as we can. And I have to say, all of those conversations so far have been entirely positive and to those of you who are leaders and in the room of districts and boroughs, to Keith and to Peter and to Martin and to Phil, I don't think I've forgotten anybody hopefully, but we, and Andy as well. And so, you know, thank you for the support that you've given us so far, thank you for engaging positively because this will be a route that will be a tricky one to navigate but one that I'm sure that we can do well. And the final thing and perhaps the most controversial part of this is that the government are requiring us in Clause D to request that we defer our elections, that we postpone them for a year until May 2026. Now, I'm a Democrat, I don't particularly ever want to defer any elections, I think we have a well-established and well-set process of electing councils on a four-yearly cycle. There is however, a clear guidance for us that the expectation from government is that we should create sufficient capacity and sufficient stability to enable us to negotiate and to deliver the combined authority and the mayoralty before the spring of next year. That means doing a number of different things. Firstly, the government will want to have a consultation which they will run, which will run for between six and eight weeks. Secondly, then we would have to negotiate how the combined authority is established and how it works and the powers that it has and what it looks like. And having spoken with colleagues from around the country where they have already been engaged in that process, that is not a straightforward one. We want to make sure it's right for us. Every area has its own nuances, every area has its own needs, every area has its own relationships. And so making sure that that is right is a really important job for us to do and to take time over. Then the government has to lay the statutory instrument in Parliament that creates this body and creates this mayoralty. And then finally, we've got to create it and it's got to be ready to go once the mayor is elected in May 2026. So that's a big job, it's going to take a lot of time, it's going to take a lot of our time, it's going to take a lot of officer time and we need to be able, all of us, be it that you are doing so as a county councillor or be it for those of you who are dual hatters as a district or borough councillor, need to be engaged in that process, understand what is happening and be able to scrutinise it properly. In order to do that, the government are suggesting that they would welcome a request from us to postpone the elections for a year. We can only postpone the elections for a year or they can only postpone the elections for a year. They can't postpone it for a lesser period of time, the legislation is clear about that. To do so in a more, in a, for a shorter period of time would require primary legislation to make that change. And it is also something that, in which we are not alone. We are joining with councils from Westmoreland to Essex, to both East and West Sussex, to Surrey, to Norfolk, Suffolk, Essex, I said that already, Essex, Kent, that's the one, in asking for this to happen. And the reason for it happening is to create that space, there is precedent in terms of the fact that when previous local government reform has been carried out, North Yorkshire, Cumberland, Cumbria and Somerset have all extended their terms by a year to enable that to happen. And so it is something about which, although I'm not particularly happy, we need to ask because unless we do so, the government will not think we're serious, they will not think we've got the capacity to do this and they will not expect us to be able to deliver what they expect us to do in terms of that combined authority and mayoralty in 2026. I've gone on long enough, but I hope that gives you the detail that you need to consider going forward. I very much welcome your questions because I think there are still very many unknowns that we have and there is an awful lot of information that we've been asked to imbibe, to interrogate and to think about in a very short period of time that also happen to include Christmas and New Year holidays. We are taking a step into the unknown in part, we don't exactly know where this journey ends, but to still use my journey analogy, I think it much better that we step into that unknown and we take some control of it ourselves rather than it coming along and waiting for it to come and knock us over. So I commend this report to you, I hope that you will take time to consider it, do ask as many questions as you need, take as long as we need to debate this today because this is a profound change. Let's not make any bones about this and as a consequence what we need to do is to make sure that we get this right, not just for ourselves but much more importantly for the people of Hampshire. And to provide some kind of direction for also, and in our thoughts must be, the many thousands of people who work for this organisation and the other councils and much more importantly the tens of thousands of people who rely upon us for their services. So making, taking that journey and being able to make sure that the outcome is to their benefit must be at the forefront of our thoughts. Mr Chairman, thank you so much.
Thank you Leader. Now's the opportunity to ask the leader's questions before we move on to a debate. Can I have questions please? Councillor Reid.
Thank you Chairman. Debating today is the postponement of the elections and what I wanted to understand is how the associated period of perda would impact on the process if we went ahead with them.
Councillor Reid, thank you for the question. If we were to enter a pre-election period, as you know there can be no consultation, there can be no, nothing that happens that is of any, anything that might be considered to be politically tricky or controversial during that period. That period would begin at the end of March and it would run until the election, the day, so the day after the elections, once the results are declared on May the 2nd. Much more importantly however, there's a wider period. Our focus would be upon the election itself, those of us who are standing again would be wanting to go out and make sure that we are putting out our case in front of the electorate. And then we would have the process of whatever the outcome, whoever won that election would need to create a new administration and we would have no doubt many new members and many new colleagues who would need to be inducted, who would need to be provided with the IT that they needed, that they would need to be able to understand how the different processes worked. So realistically, if you're talking about us having only 15 months to create that new body, you're probably taking a period not just of the six weeks of the election, pre-election period, but more likely a period of between 10 to 12 weeks out of that process. And if the government didn't think that was going to be an issue for us, they wouldn't be suggesting that we should ask, would be my view.
Councillor Philpot.
Yes, thank you Chairman and Leader. Question. Whatever happens today in terms of the vote, there will be a period of negotiation and consultation. Even at this early stage, and of course we don't know yet whether the Secretary of State would agree or not agree to postponing elections and so on, have you given, had an opportunity to give any thought to- an opportunity to give any thought to how those negotiations will be constructed and how the consultation will be delivered or carried out?
Thank you.
Leader.
Councillor Philpot, thank you. The, so the first thing that we know is that the consultation will be carried out by the MHCLG, not by us. So they will carry out that consultation. They, as I've said, they anticipate it taking six to eight weeks. We will know by the 31st of January whether we are part of the priority programme and whether we are postponing elections and whether we are, whether we are going through that process. I would assume that it wouldn't start immediately on the 1st of February, it would take another couple of weeks to begin to that, to begin to get to that place. The additional part of that would then be the negotiation would be carried out by a combination of the leaders and the senior officers of the upper tier councils. I have to say, one of the things that I think has helped us enormously, if you don't mind me mentioning, is that the fact that we have been talking to one another about this since June, so since before the election and we have subsequently built up not only good relationships between us all, ones that where we can trust one another, where we understand where we all come from and we all understand what our purpose is and where we want to be in terms of the deal. We also have been able to create the atmosphere where that should be a relatively harmonious process. But it will be one that will take some time inevitably. I don't know exactly what it looks like and that has to be, to a degree bespoke for us, but we have some sense of how it has worked because if you look at North Yorkshire or if you look at Cumbria, you can see where various processes have gone through and Lincolnshire, where there's been a precedent for that happening. And through the bodies that we, with whom we work, the LGA and the CCN, we're able to get a good sense of how other people have found that process. We can take their experience, we can apply it to how we manage things and we can work out what happens. What I can tell you is, what we understand from them is that it's not a very quick process. It will take some time and it will take, as one of my colleagues said on a call the other day, it takes a lot, from Durham, I think, it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of officer time. It takes a lot of member time. It needs proper scrutiny. And what I can absolutely guarantee for you all is that we will ensure that there is proper scrutiny for you to be aware of what is happening, to look at how the process is going to be happening and certainly when we get to the outcomes, to properly be aware of how that looks and have your say about it.
Councillor Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you firstly to the Leader for setting out things as clearly as he has done. I think it's quite a difficult issue for people to get their head around. It's so complicated. My question is in two parts. What will happen now that the Isle of Wight council have voted not to go on the priority programme? And should we think about a referendum rather than a consultation?
Leader.
So the Isle of Wight, this is where my reference to Dry January comes in. The Isle of Wight last night, their full council voted by 16 to 13 against joining the devolution priority programme. However, their cabinet were given some advice in the meeting which suggested that they should not vote. And there are seven members of their cabinet. So their cabinet meets this evening, at which point their cabinet will make, it's quite clear that it's, well, it's quite clear that this, that the advice that we have all received is that this is clear, that it is a decision of the, it's an executive decision, not a non-executive decision. So it's a decision that is ultimately in the realm of cabinet. We might agree or disagree about whether that's the case, but it is the fact that that's the case. And so in each of these meetings that we are holding at the Isle of Wight held yesterday, it is deemed to be a consultative meeting. That said, you know, obviously what you've got is a situation where you've got a majority of three against with seven people who presumably having proposed it would have voted for. So I can't say what the Isle of Wight are going to do. David, I can't tell you what they might do because it's not for me to suggest that, but it does seem a pretty sort of unusual situation and good luck to Phil, who is the Leader, in sorting that out because it's a bit of a challenge. What is quite clear is that, I think, you know, the honest answer is that if one of the partners would decide not to go ahead, then that probably means that we're not joining the priority programme. Because the government has been quite clear that they expect the entire area to sign up. And the referendum, referendum, it's not, we are not, we are not being offered a referendum and where this has happened elsewhere, there have been no referendums. The last referendum that was around this kind of reform was actually in the early 2000s when, if you remember, John Prescott suggested there should be a North East Regional Assembly and from memory, it was something like an 80/20 vote against. The, interestingly, at the time, they did ask an additional question about local government reorganisation. But that's the last time they've ever asked it and I think their experience in government is probably, you know, the experience of that outcome probably tells you why they don't offer us the ability to carry out a referendum now. So I don't particularly, I can't have an opinion on it necessarily because I can't offer it to you or suggest that we would do it, I'm afraid. I can see why you might wish to do it, but the way that it has occurred in government previously probably tells us that it's not going to be on the table for us.
Councillor Tree.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Leader, for the presentation. I just have two quick questions and one is, you used the word expectation to use the current district boundaries, district and borough boundaries to propose the unitary boundaries. Is this just an expectation for ease and not an absolute requirement? And if so, does having longer to work up the proposals under the fast track route, i.e. till the autumn, give us the opportunity to look at boundary options more fully? And the second question is, I do understand the pros and cons in suspending the election, but in the statement, you also said the government are requiring us to defer the election to be accepted for fastback. Is the delay of the election an absolute explicitly required by government or just expected or just perhaps desired internally here? So I just want to be absolutely clear. Thank you.
Leader.
Councillor Sheehan, thank you so much for that. So the first part, the, there was an initial, there was a, so this has been a journey? And the journey prior to the White Paper publication was that there seemed to be a suggestion that they might look at creating new councils based upon functioning economic areas, which would have necessarily meant that the existing boundaries we have would have been moved around and we would have split up districts and so on. That changed in terms of the narrative in the week before Christmas where they have, the MHCLG have now been talking about an expectation that we would use the existing building blocks of districts and boroughs. I think there is a practical point here. The practical point being that if you are going to start moving the boundaries of districts and boroughs, you begin to have to create fresh legislation, you have to create the involvement of the Boundary Commission. It's a much more complex, a much more difficult piece of work. And indeed, that was the description that was given to us on a webinar that many of the leaders of councils, be they second tier or upper tier, on Tuesday, where we were told that there was an expectation that we wouldn't be going down that route, although it wouldn't be completely ruled out, it would obviously add complexity and time to the process. Unhelpfully, in terms of the election, the postponement of the election, the government have firmly put the ball in our court. Unhelpfully, that's the wrong word. It's entirely right that it's us that should be asking whether we postpone our election. We should make that decision and that's what you're being asked to do today and that's why I think we should take it as a separate recommendation and vote on it separately. There, to say that it's a requirement, I think is, forgive me for saying that because I think it's too strong a word. They have said that they have an expectation, however, that we are able to, as I say, use the two words, provide the capacity and the stability to be able to deliver by next year. And for those of us that were listening to the webinar on Tuesday, I think you could have equally taken it either way. You could either say, well, as long as you can do it with, you know, with the capacity and the stability, then, then, you know, you could still go ahead with the elections. But equally, we expect you to have the capacity and stability and therefore we expect that you would be deferring your elections and postponing your elections for a year. I think the fact that they are asking us to do it, the fact that they are suggesting that we should do it by way of the proposal that they are asking us to consider probably tells us that their thought is that we should be creating that space, not creating that uncertainty, not creating that potential inability to engage with them in the way that they would expect us to do so to meet the timeline because it's an incredibly tight timeline. And hopefully you heard in my answer previously, we could be taking a significant amount of time out of that process if we were to engage in the pre-election period and then to go through the process of creating and inducting a new council.
Councillor Wallace.
Thank you. I've got two questions. The paper for us today, which is largely derived from the government's White Paper, lays out the potential benefits of devolution but does not list any of the risks. Will there be a separate paper coming out that lists the risks of devolution or are residents and councillors only going to be presented with one side of the argument? And the second question is, whilst the recommendation in this report is to delay county council elections by 12 months and to hold mayoral elections in May 2026, the date for the unitary authority elections is estimated to be May 26 or May 27. Reorganisation of local authorities enhances a massive task, as has been acknowledged. By applying to postpone elections now, are we meaning that existing councillors could be in place for 24 months or more beyond their original elected period? Thank you.
Leader.
So there are, there are some risks of a devolution. I think that is apparent to all of us. But I think the, for me, and this is probably more a point for debate, the benefits outweigh the risks and the vulnerabilities by some really considerable margin. I think that kind of concern needs to be drawn out in the scrutiny that we will subsequently go through to be able to understand exactly what it means for us. And the negotiation should be based entirely upon mitigating any risks or any vulnerabilities that we identify for our area in whatever deal might be coming, might be coming our way. So it's contingent on us all then to work on that basis. The Secretary of State has the power to defer the election by a year. That's all. He can only do it by one year. I think you're conflating the different options in front of us, if I might say that, Malcolm, in terms of you thinking when there might be an election for a new council. So taking the devolution route, the priority devolution route, we're doing devolution first and then we do local government reorganisation, LGR. And there is another route and it's the route that, for example, Surrey and Oxfordshire are considering taking whereby they agree to do local government reorganisation first and then they will lay devolution on top of it. And in those circumstances, that's where those dates of giving plans for new councils to the government by May or September come in and it's where the talk of having elections in either 26 or 27 also apply. If it's helpful, there's been a term called shadow council and I know some of you have asked us, have asked me what a shadow council means. What a shadow council means is that in the process of establishing new councils, there will be an election at a point to whatever the new council makeup looks like and a shadow council will be created. Effectively, the shadow council is the body that will become the full council once the , once that new council is properly established, normally 12 months after the election. And they use that first year to establish it, to agree the constitution, to employ the senior staff, to decide where their offices are going to be, to do all of the stuff that you need to do to create a new organisation. So that it's ready to go live and be up and running on that first day. And on that first day, the existing councils drop away and the new, the councillors who have been the shadow councillors become the full councillors and that becomes the council going forward. There's lots of councils in that sentence. And so that's how that part of it works. And so, for example, if we were in one of those counties that were going for local government reorganisation first, the local government reorganisation priority programme, we would be anticipating electing that shadow council next year and then electing their mayor in 27 or either 27, 28. So that, that's why there's that difference. Who knows what happens next year? I cannot prejudge what the government tell us to do. What I can tell you is that my personal view is that postponing the election for a year now is the right thing to do. It provides us with the stability and capacity that they require of us. I think it would be very difficult for us if we were not looking at a council, an election for those new councils until 27 or 28, not to hold an election next year. Because what you would be doing would be extending the life of this council by more than 50%. I can understand why we might do it by 25% to get this piece of work over the line. Beyond that personally, it's a very personal view, I think that would be too long and undemocratic.
Councillor Thacker.
Thank you, Chairman. It's rather embarrassing. I've had to change my question to, how do I take my name off the list when I wish to redraw my question?
Well, I think your name's disappeared from the list. That answers your question. And thank you very much for not asking the same question that's already been asked. Moving on, I have seat 04, which I think is that one there. So I'll get rid of that one. And the next on the list is Councillor North.
I have the same problem as Councillor Thacker. I was going to ask the Leader about, to clarify the position about the Isle of Wight. I think he's used best endeavours to do that already, Mr Chairman, so I withdraw my question.
Thank you, Councillor North. Councillor Porter, are you going to do the same?
No, sorry. My question's different. In fact, I've got two questions. The first one is, and thank you very much for your very comprehensive description, I think it's really helpful, that you said that they could only defer for a year at an election, but they can defer it for less than a year within that time, can't they? Because in January, in 2027, the general election and local elections, well, the local election remained in the May, but the general election was deferred to June. So they can move it within that year, my understanding is.
Oh, sorry. Yes, fine. Don't worry. No. So within the existing legislation, the, it is only possible for the Secretary of State to delay an election for 12 months. They can change the year, they can't do it at a, they can't make it for a shorter period. What I think you're thinking of is 2001, when the elections were deferred by a month, if you remember, for foot and mouth. And then there was a delay of a year in 2021, 2020, for the, for the Covid. In any of those cases where it has been deferred by less than a year, it's required primary legislation to deliver that change out with the existing legislation that says 12 months. So it is possible to do it, but the government would need to put in a specific piece of primary legislation through Parliament to specifically allow us to do something different to that which they have suggested. Does that make sense?
Second question, thank you. You've talked about the process now of going forward for the rapid speed timetable, but there's no mention of finance or cost of setting up the mayoralty itself.
there's no mention of finance or cost of setting up the mayoralty itself. Will that be part of the negotiations?
In part it is, in part it's not. We know that we have been told that we will receive £2 million to enable us to establish the combined authority and to do that piece of work. I think then there is an expectation that much of the establishment of it would be using people and resources that are already in existence in the constituent councils that would put it together. So I suppose there's an element of them saying, well, it's there already. I think the bit that does worry me about LGR, and that forms part of the negotiation that we would have to do around the local government reorganisation, is that currently there is no suggestion at all that there would be any money towards the establishment of these new councils. And that, I think, is a real issue for us all, because although they're saying, oh, you'd make lots of savings from having fewer councils, you know, and therefore fewer offices, therefore fewer senior officers, therefore fewer of all sorts of different things. In fact, those savings should be going to the bottom line to help us all be sustainable in the future, shouldn't they, rather than having to worry about how we might be setting up new offices and setting up new bodies and having new logos or whatever we might need to do in order to do that? So that's the bit that worries me. I'm kind of confident about the fact that we can cover the cost of doing the work for the devolution, for the combined authority, for the mayoralty. It's the local government reorganisation piece that I think we need to go make a very strong case to say, you need to help us with this change that we're bringing in.
councillor Carter.
With her second question, councillor Porter took my question, which was, what is the cost of the mayor, their office and their hangers-on? And it was going, and, sorry, sorry. And will the combined authority and residents save money with a mayor? For example, is it cheaper to have the mayor than the total cost of 11 boroughs and districts, for example?
Leader. Councillor Carter, thank you. I think, if I might say, your question has just done exactly what is so confusing for people. You're conflating the two different things. You're conflating the mayor with getting rid of the 11 districts and boroughs. They are two different things. They are linked together by our requirement to do things, but do things together, but they are quite different. I'm not sure I would call the people who will work for the mayor hangers-on. Not least because in the early days, there will no doubt be somebody in this chamber who will be the leader of the county council, assisting them as part of the combined authority when they are in place and that is established. I think there's a serious point there in terms of, where do the people that come from? Are we creating something new for which we're going to have to pay? And the short answer to that, in large part, is no. And the benefit that the mayor brings to us is the fact that we have more powers, we can influence things better, we can have, there is a better way of us being able to ensure that we tailor the decisions that government would otherwise be making in Whitehall in Westminster to what is suitable perhaps you in the Solent. And whilst that's not directly a saving necessarily, it does mean that we get a better service, I think, out of that. But I think there is a piece as well that says, actually, if you're integrating a mayor to look after those different functions, plus then alongside the police and the fire services, you know, you are not duplicating another person like the Police and Crime Commissioner. You are at least still only electing one person to that position across Hampshire and the Solent and replacing the one person that we currently elect across the piece, albeit that they only look after the police at the moment.
councillor Glenn.
Thank you, chairman. Leader, thank you very much indeed for clarifying for us in your first speech here, the whole issue about reorganisation and everything that goes with it. I think that's helped a lot of us. My question has been answered, but, I was going to ask about scrutiny, but because I couldn't put mine off, I've got another question. Okay? Two, in fact. With regards to scrutiny, do you think it would be wise for us to now contact our lead officers, as I have already done, to ask them to set up extra meetings, because we're going to need them, certainly for this year and probably 2026? And the second thing is, if we are going to go ahead with this, which I totally agree with, shouldn't we actually put our, shouldn't we be putting our mouths where our money is, or the other way around, and actually forego our salaries for the next year? Now, that's making me really popular, but it's a fair point. Would you agree with that?
Leader.
So do I make myself popular in here, or do I make myself popular out there, councillor Glenn? That is decision for all of you. It is not something, that final question is a decision for all of you, that is not something that it would be for any of us to decide upon, you know, in terms of an executive position. The one thing I would say, and I think this is true of us all, there is nobody in this chamber who does not work jolly hard for their constituents. And although you might look at politicians and think, oh, they all look quite sort of well off, we don't get paid an awful lot for what we do. And if you look at the number of hours that each of us work for the people that we represent and the areas that we look after, then I think that it's fair to say that none of us are in it for the money. However, I can see that it might be a reasonable thing for you to suggest, and I look forward to you mentioning that you're going to put the application in not to be paid for the next year. You can always do that yourself, should you wish. I think the serious point, though, Jonathan, is around scrutiny. I think I would encourage you not to put meetings in a diary as yet. I think we need to think really carefully about the way in which we do scrutiny, because this will be cross-cutting. It will affect absolutely everything that we do, and we need to think about the ways by which we do that and how we manage it. And it is a conversation that I have begun with Carolyn and with Gary about how that might look. I want to make sure that it is, as I've said, a collegiate and a cross-party process in a way that we have not done before. How that exactly looks, you will have to forgive me, because it has only been, as I mentioned, less than four weeks, just over three weeks, and we've had Christmas and New Year's holidays in the between. So to get to that point, we've not been able to get there yet, and we don't even know whether we're going to be on the priority programme until the end of the month. So there are a lot of decisions there for us to, yet to be made. But what I can assure you is that we will come back to you, and we will talk to you about it, and we'll find the best way possible that everyone can be involved in this process, because it does affect us all regardless of party, regardless of longevity, regardless of area we represent. Things will change for everybody, and we all need to be able to have our say and have the time and the space to have that input into the process.
councillor Todd.
Thank you very much indeed. The Bournemouth Daily Echo yesterday carries a story called, headed, "BCP joining regional devolution bid makes complete sense." Councillor Adams King told the Echo, "I am very open to BCP looking eastwards rather than westwards towards the heart of Wessex, especially given my knowledge of the area and of BCP itself." So I just wondered how today's decision impacts on that when they have their full council next Wednesday. Are we keeping the door open? Are we precluding it by the decision we take today? So that was one question. I do have a second question. I was also in the webinar on Tuesday, and, quote, "It is an option to join the devolution priority programme and not delay elections," unquote, I think was said by one of the civil servants. And they very much framed the discussion in terms of explaining how delaying the election would help you achieve devolution or reorganisation. And I suspect they're expecting a bit more than it's all really difficult. They're probably expecting, or at least on the face of it, they would be expecting a sense of what would we be doing at the end of March and during April and the beginning of May? And do we have any idea what that work actually is and on what basis we are able to say with a bit more confidence than a general sense of there being lots of work and it being difficult, that we need that time in order to be able to progress the work towards a combined authority in the event that we join the programme?
Leader.
So this is perhaps a consequence of having an old mate who is the editor of the Bournemouth Echo. The issue with, let me deal with BCP first. BCP, at the moment, have, it's been suggested that they should join what's going to be called, I think, Heart of Wessex. That's Somerset, Wilkshire and Dorset, all three unitary authorities, all three large rural areas, as we all know. And the conversations that I have had partially as a consequence of my former, my formerly being a Bournemouth councillor, has been to say, would we be, would we, would we as a group of four authorities be open to them wishing to join our combined authority? And the short answer has been, we wouldn't say no. I can, I would repeat what I said in that article. I can see that it makes complete sense, because if you think about Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul, for a start, two of them used to be in Hampshire anyway. But also, they have three universities, they have an airport, they have a port, they are a suburban area that is an extension of New Milton. We might like to call it West New Milton if they join us. But the serious point is that all of their, most of their links head eastwards through the New Forest, along the A31 and up the A338. Their main links for both business, for much of their commerce, for much of their, a lot of their education, a lot of their students then end up at Brockenhurst College or in Southampton. So there are lots of reasons why I can see it would make complete sense to do that. The challenge, the challenge for us all is the fact that if you think about that piece of public sector, the form and public sector element of what we talk about, is that they are part of a different footprint for police, they're part of a different footprint for fire, and they're part of a different footprint for the NHS. So while I can see that it makes complete sense, I think there are hurdles there about which we've not necessarily thought. And they, I think that is for them to overcome, frankly. They need to work out how they can overclump that issue if they wish to then join us. There is no reason why we wouldn't create a combined authority and then be able to add another part to it later on if we wished. That has happened on occasion, and it is happening now as part of some of the other reorganisations around the country. So that could be part of it, but it, you know, it is something that does not stop us going forward. And the one conversation that I can say has happened between the four upper-tier leaders in Hampshire and the Solent is that we would not want it to stop us going forward. We would not want it to hinder us in any way joining the priority programme and getting on with this. But if that meant that they could overcome that issue, that they wanted to begin that conversation, and MHCLG said, yes, we can see that there's a way through this, and it's a much more complex issue than that, because actually, the police are governed by the Home Office, of course, and so there are different, and then you've got Department of Health moving, potentially moving health boundaries and so on. So it's a piece of work that needs to be done, but it's not one that I would want, I would want us to be distracted by. I would also not want to say no to them, because I can see why it would make sense. So I hope that helps. The webinar, it would have been so helpful if they'd have given us sort of clearer answers on that webinar. So you heard exactly what I heard, you heard correctly, that they said, you know, they could, but then they went into the whole piece about those two words, "good stability and capacity." I could give you a very long answer now about all the different pieces of work that I anticipate we're going to have to do. I could ask Gary to do that for you as well, and I'm very happy that we begin to lay that kind of detail out for you. But the fact remains that in the conversations that we have had directly with MHCLG, in the conversations that we have had internally and with our partners across Hampshire and the Solent, we have concluded that they are right, that taking that period of pre-election period where we wouldn't be able to carry out any kind of consultation or engage in their consultation, taking out the period during which we would have to create a new administration and, or you would have to create, those of you who are still here would have to create a new administration and undertake the induction and training of new colleagues and get them up to speed, all of that would take a significant amount of time during which we would not be able to actively engage in the conversations, negotiations and the consultations we would need to be able to get it over the line for next spring. So forgive me for repeating myself, I don't wish to do ad infinitum, but there is an enormous amount of work to do. I can lay it out for you, and I'm very happy to circulate that to everybody afterwards, but we could spend a very long time here doing so. What we have done is to learn from our colleagues who have already gone through this in Derbyshire or in Nottinghamshire or in Durham or in Cumberland or in North Yorkshire, to understand what it means and what it entails. And they concur with that view, as I think you wouldn't have heard, because it was a different webinar, it was a CCN webinar, but, you know, it's been confirmed to us all in terms of everything that everyone's told us about how this process now proceeds.
councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Nick, for all the hard work that you've put in. I agree that, you know, there are lots of reasons why we should do this. I understand all of that. What concerns me is that they knew what they were doing when they said, you've got this short amount of time to make your mind up. We couldn't go out and do a consultation.
Is this a question, councillor Harvey?
The question is coming. The question that I would like to ask is, during all of these consultations that you've been through, where are the public coming into? We represent our areas, but where's their voice? I don't see that voice at all. And that concerns me, because I've had lots and lots of emails about what they've read in the paper, and they don't hear what we hear, of course. But where is their voice? And if we're supposed to be giving our voice to it, I don't trust the government. That's my problem.
councillor Harvey, Marge, thanks for that question. I think those points are well made in debate, by the way, in hopefully a few minutes' time. The voice of the public gets heard in the consultation period that commences sometime in February, the MHCLG run. I think, again, it's about divorcing devolution from local government reorganisation. Devolution impacts the people we all represent, but frankly, it's one of those decisions that I think we are all well enough established and well enough placed to make on, you know, make on their behalf, having listened to them as we always do whenever we have a decision to make like this. The bit that worries me much more is the bit about local government reorganisation. I think the way by which we ensure that we are hearing the voices of people, that we are taking into account local concerns, we are taking into account the fears that people have of not being able to work with their council as well as they currently do, because it will be much bigger, all of that needs to be taken into account. And that's why, actually, I would commend this again to you, because it is the one choice that pushes that decision further away from us than the other two options we have. We get until the end of the year, we don't have to make the decision within four months or eight months, as the other two options suggest.
councillor Crawford.
Thank you, chairman. I appreciate very much the long explanation that the leader has given about the difficulties of postponing the elections and so on. But the question I have is, what is his judgment if this council was to withdraw its expression of interest in postponing the election? Because it does seem to me that the decision then rests with the government, and why would they accept Hampshire on to the they accept Hampshire onto the priority programme if we'd said we are not particularly interested in postponing the elections?
Leader.
Councillor Crawford, thank you Alex. I think, I think the answer is, well, they wouldn't. That's, that's the bottom line. If you look at all of those other councils that are going forward with their application for the priority programme, they're all doing the same thing. If there was any suggestion that we could do it without postponing elections, then they would be doing so too. And so that's why we're all here.
Councillor Hiscott.
Thank you, Jim. Can I just ask the leader what the pros and cons? Given all the uncertainties of both the process and the outcome we've heard this morning, what are the pros and cons of actually being fast tracked?
Leader.
Councillor Hiscott, Dominic, thank you. For me, the pros and, the pro is that we get to step up to the table and sit down and begin to talk about it sooner rather than later and we begin to have some control ourselves. The cons, well, the cons are that we've got two alternative choices. The first would be that if we go down the priority local government reorganisation programme, that means that we've got to go far quicker with that reorganisation and those creation of those new councils and for all the reasons that you've heard me saying in other, in other answers, we wouldn't be able to, you know, do as much of that kind of consultation and we would not be able to have the measured and evidence-based discussion that I think we need to have around that. The, the alternative third option is effectively to go, say, we don't want to be on the devolution programme, we equally don't want to be on the priority local government reorganisation programme, in which case we have to put our proposals in by September and then we sit and wait. And that is when we get done on to, I fear. And certainly we, we again have to do local government reorganisation first before we get the benefits of devolution. So the big pro for me is that we get the prize, we get devolution first, which I think is a good thing for us and we get longer to think about what local government reorganisation looks like for us all, not much longer, but a bit longer and every moment will count in that process of ensuring that we do it as best as we possibly can.
Councillor Collett.
Thank you Chairman and thank you Nick for the cross-party way you've handled this throughout and the constructive way you've sought to involve everybody in the process, that's much appreciated. And I agree with a number of things you've said today and we'll debate those things that we're concerned about as the meeting goes on. My question is, you've rightly identified that we are being required to go at this in a very rushed manner, but the objectives of achieving devolution make us think, well, maybe that's what we should be doing. Following on from that, the real danger underlying this in terms of the local government reorganisation is that we end up with a local government structure which is contrived and doesn't suit the constituencies and the Bournemouth Christchurch Paul example is one of those things which would be better if we had time to sort out properly. So can you tell us your thoughts on how you balance the advantage of getting devolution perhaps one year or maybe two more quickly against the perhaps very long-term local government being badly structured and then the boundary reviews that would have to follow and further reorganisations over the next generation to sort out the dog's breakfast that's been created? Thank you.
Councillor Collett, Adrian, thank you for that question. I think had Martin read out the entire article, don't do that Martin. We, you would have, you would have heard the other quote that I put in there is that I know what pain actually and what upset was caused by the creation of Bournemouth Christchurch Paul. There were a lot of people who felt disenfranchised, there were a lot of people who felt that they weren't listened to during that process and I can absolutely see that we in Hampshire could go down that route unless we do absolutely the right thing and we do it in the proper way. The short answer, I'm afraid, again to your question is very similar to Dominic's in the sense there's not a, we don't do local government reorganisation answer to this question, there is not a do nothing option. I think if there were a do nothing option open to us, then there might be, you know, actually for me, a more balanced decision to make. But going down this route of priority devolution means that we get to do devolution first and we get longer to think about local government reorganisation. I don't think it's long enough, I think we should have longer to do it in, but we at least get a few more months rather than having to go as early as May. And, and you know, goodness alone knows how those areas that have got to come up with a new plan within three or four months are going to manage because it seems incredibly short period of time to me.
Councillor Williams.
Thank you very much Chair. I just wanted to ask him is, again in regards to postponement of elections, you mentioned the primary legislation, would this be the same legislation that was brought in through Covid? And my second part to that question was that legislation also suspended any by-elections that would happen within that year? So would any by-elections that would happen be suspended until 2026 as in May as well?
So, Councillor Williams Jonathan, thank you, thank you for that. So if you, if you remember the, the Covid legislation was very specific around not just postponing the elections until such time as they, they did it actually for a year to begin with as well, but they postponed all by-elections so they wouldn't have the risk of people having to go and do that. And funnily enough, we were due to have a by-election on the Thursday, which they then cancelled on the Wednesday in Test Valley that, that week. So that was specific to that circumstance. We're not, they're not proposing primary legislation for that, there would have to be primary legislation if we wanted to postpone our elections for less than a year to whatever point we wish to determine. So we postpone our elections a year, we extend the life of this council by one year. If anybody is unable to continue to serve during that period, there would be a by-election on the existing boundaries and we go through the process in the normal way as we would. Indeed, two months ago, three, when you were elected, so. I'm kind of glad that we've gone from the longest-serving councillor to the newest councillor in, in both asking questions, so thank you.
Councillors, I have no further requests for questions, so we can now move on to the debate. And at this point, we discuss whether there are any amendments and we already have one. So what I'm proposing to do is to put that amendment on the screen if we can and ask Councillor House to propose it. Councillor House, if you would just restrict yourself to the, the actual wording and then I'll ask for a second and then you can have your main speech if you are happy with that procedure.
Well, Jim, for the purpose of debate, I'll simply move the amendment as circulated electronically last night before a second before speaking.
Thank you Councillor House. Have you a second for your proposal? Your amendment?
Yes, I would like to be seconding the amendment, please.
And do you reserve your right to speak?
I do indeed, yes.
Councillor Todd, thank you. Councillor House, and under the rules that we've got at the moment, you have 30 minutes.
Thank you much, Chairman. Because I'll take 30 minutes, but I'll take a few in much the same way that Nick did earlier this morning. And I think I'd first like to start by, by again thanking Nick because as others already have, we've had a thoughtful and measured debate so far and I hope that's the way that the debate will continue through the course of the events that follow. These are difficult and complex issues and it is important that we take them in a careful, measured, thoughtful way as we've been doing over the course of the last few weeks. And as I said in my email to all councillors yesterday evening, this is an amendment from a Liberal Democrat as opposed to a Liberal Democrat amendment. A Liberal Democrat amendment would be, I assure you, much, much longer and would talk about all sorts of things such as electoral reform and the like too. And this amendment doesn't, doesn't attempt to do any of that, it simply tries to reflect some of the issues that have been raised with me by colleagues, by others across other parties, people from no political party and people who are just interested bystanders in the process of change and trying to understand the complexity of everything that we're going through. I think colleagues, there are three at least different issues that we're being asked to think about today. Devolution, local government reorganisation and elections and the future of democracy. They're, they're all linked, but they're all separate as well. And the key questions that I believe we should be asking ourselves for each of those issues is what's in the best interest of our residents, the people of Hampshire? It's not about what's in the best interest of Hampshire County Council or Hart District Council or whatever, it's about what's in the best interests of our residents. And then when we think about those three issues, if we link them, what is the overall balance across those issues? And these are, I think, as has already become clear from some of the discussions so far, these are matters of personal judgment, there's not always a simple right or wrong. And we'll have to weigh those individually as we approach the debate and I'd like to take each of those three in turn and along the way I'll no doubt give you my view as to where that balance lies. Firstly, on devolution. We've been having devolution debates in this council chamber and around the county for 20 years in one form or another. We've got close to agreeing them at different points. I remember we got within minutes of agreeing a devolution deal when Roy Perry was leader and then, oh, we just pulled back at the last minute. There've been other times where we've simply said no in kind of like an Ian Paisley-like way. And then there've been other times where we've said, yes, bring it on to government and government has backed away. So there's a checkered history to this stuff, but I think it is also fair to say that actually a lot of what's on offer is pretty limited. Some of this stuff is things that have been taken away from us in the past or from local government or would be taken away from us, so it's reverse devolution through this process. The powers of the Police and Crime Commissioner, our local government powers at the moment, they will go to the combined authority and mayor. The fire authority, a local government function, will be abolished upwards and those powers taken by the new mayor and combined authority. We used to hear as a county council have strategic planning powers, well, they're going to be given to the combined authority and mayor too. So let's be clear that this isn't always about taking things from government and giving it to a local body. In some cases, it's the opposite of that, it's taken from local people and given to a more remote institution, albeit that institution will still cover all of Hampshire and the Isle of Wight. And if we think about some of those functions that might have been lost along the way, I suspect with a bit of hindsight, most of us would actually say, the old police authority was more accountable than the Police and Crime Commissioner, you know? And the fire authority now is still more accountable than a new mayor would be in terms of democratic accountability. So we need to think about the balance on some of this stuff because most of what's actually on offer from central government is pretty limited in terms of its real powers, in terms of its real funding. And I listened very carefully all those years ago to Roy Perry who said, be careful what you wish for. Being offered a bung of 30 million pounds a year for a few years that the next government might turn around and change isn't actually a very good bung, is it? So we need to think quite carefully about some of these things. And my summary on devolution actually is it's a pretty thin rule in the round. If we were genuinely being offered to take responsibility for the National Health Service, full stop, in Hampshire and the Isle of Wight, if we were genuinely going to be offered the opportunity to take responsibility for the probation service and parts of the judiciary in Hampshire and the Isle of Wight, full stop, that would be a different set of issues. We're not being offered that, we're being offered little, little morsels from the table of central government to tempt us into something which probably isn't worth that much. But is it worth having on balance? Yeah, I would say it is. So to my first of those three questions, should we go ahead with devolution? My view is, yeah, we should. On balance, it's just about, just about, that takes more power from the centre than it gives up to another body, albeit we do need to understand that we are giving up powers from on policing, community safety, on fire to a more remote body than the one that currently offers it. Some of the powers that we're being offered, I was interested in discussion about Romsey Brewery, are actually an energetic Test Valley Borough Council, I mean no disrespect to councillor North and councillor Adams King, an energetic Test Valley Borough Council can work now with Homes England on compulsory purchase powers to do those things and use influence. And sometimes influence is actually worth a bit more than power. So let's be careful on some of this stuff too. But that first test to me on devolution has been made and I think we should go with it, albeit we've got little choice anyway in the long term because government is very clear they're going to have elected mayors because they love elected mayors. Second test is local government reorganisation, I think that is quite a lot different because there are complex issues here. Firstly, does it bring decisions closer to the people? That to me is the fundamental test of local government. Are we talking about subsidiarity and bringing power down or are we talking about agglomerating it to a more central body? And we're doing both with local government reorganisation, I'm sorry if I interrupted a phone call over there somewhere. We're doing both with local government reorganisation. By abolishing Hampshire County Council, you could argue that we are taking decision-making closer to local people because the unitary authorities will be a bit closer than we are here today. By abolishing the district and borough councils, clearly we're doing the opposite, we're taking power up from a more local body to a slightly more centralised body. That brings me to the question about what these new unitaries are and that's why I think it's fundamental that we think about what these new unitaries are. If they are modestly sized unitaries, and I won't give a number, but if they're modestly sized unitaries, you could argue that that concentration of power moves closer to people rather than being removed from it. If they are very large unitaries, then I think it's much harder to argue that case. And the government threshold of 500,000 feels to me to be too far removed from local people. It suggests that, for example, a unitary authority would encompass New Milton and Netley Abbey. Another unitary authority would encompass Andover and Roland's Castle. Another might encompass parts of Hayling Island with Sarasbury and Titchfield. That doesn't feel like a really local authority to me in the way that we know local authorities in Hampshire at the moment. So I challenge our enthusiasm to go along with what's being put on the table to us from government at the moment. We need to retain local decision-making and value local government. So those issues to me are pretty, pretty clear and I don't think that at the moment the government offer passes that test on local government reorganisation. It's a quick and dirty local government reorganisation because the government wants to proceed at pace, as we've heard, as opposed to thinking more latterly in the long term about what do we want local government to be? The existing local government arrangements, whether we like them or not, have lasted pretty well for the last 50 years. If we're setting new local government, new local government arrangements in place, ideally we should be setting those arrangements in place that stand the test of time and are likely to last the next 50 years. And my fear is that the way that the process is being run at the moment, if we aren't allowed to take a little bit more time, be a little bit more careful, we're likely to see the reverse and a new government coming in in five years or 10 years' time will say, that didn't work, we'll start again. And that's why I think there is an argument that says firstly, let's think about the size more clearly, second, let's think about whether the existing district boundaries really are exactly right as building blocks. What happens to national parks? What are the relationships with town and parish councils going to be? Are we going to encourage Winchester to have town council and Portsmouth to have a town council so that there's still some local decision-making? All of these kind of things which are totally unanswered questions and to some extent are even unasked questions at the moment. So we're taking things at pace that need to be taken with a little bit of caution, a little bit of concern and my conclusion is that we can do better on some of this than we're currently being asked to do by government. And I'll come back to that in my conclusion, Chairman. And none of this fixes finance, none of this fixes finance. Nick was right to say, the government haven't offered more money. Government says there's no money. Well, it's back to the magic money tree issue, isn't it, I guess? You know, it doesn't exist in any meaningful way. We know that this council is in severe financial difficulty because it's been underfunded for such a long time. We know that Southampton is in the same place, we know that the Isle of Wight is in the same place. Portsmouth seems to be getting away with it, I don't quite know how they're doing it, but they seem to be getting away with it at the moment, but I'm sure that they too, a few years down the track, will be in the same position that Southampton, the Isle of Wight and Hampshire are in. And without a new financial settlement, none of this makes sense at all. Indeed, I think it's worse than that because... Indeed, I think it's worse than that, because the consequence of unitarising non-unitarised bits of Hampshire is that the financial pressures that are pushing on us here as a county council and cutting discretionary county services will then start to push and cut back on the remaining discretionary district services, because the districts will be lumped into the unitaries. And all those environmental things, all those community things that districts have still been able to do around leisure, the environment, community use, all this stuff, they're going to see the same pressure of cuts that we've had to impose on residents on county services. So that feels to me to be the wrong answer. And we haven't been given any hint or clue from government about how any of this can be sorted. And we need to have that confidence. Now, I believe a lot of this stuff can be done, and it can be done better, but with more thought, more time, and with less of a headline, headlong rush. And whether that suggests we should be on a priority programme or not feels to me to be a slightly different discussion, a different question than how we approach local government reorganisation. And I guess probably on balance, I support the concept of unitary authorities, but they've got to be close enough to the people to be local authorities, not structures that represent disparate communities. So my test on local government is failed. So I'm one all currently. I come to the last one on elections. And we do need to be clear that we have no mandate as councillors from the 1st of May this year. Let's be really clear. We were elected in May 2021 with a mandate of four years. When have elections been cancelled for Hampshire County Council in the past? Well, I can tell you, they were cancelled during the First World War. They were cancelled during the Second World War. We had triennial elections in those days, elections every three years. I did look it up. And that's the only time that county council elections have been cancelled. They've been delayed occasionally. As we know, the district elections have been delayed because of Covid. Elections were delayed because of foot and mouth. But they've been delayed by a short period of time. And it is right to say that the current legislation says elections can be postponed for a year, but governments have always found a way to postpone elections for a shorter period of time if it was convenient. Legislation goes through the House of Commons in one day when there is a need to do it, as there was for foot and mouth, as there was for Covid. And it has happened on several times when we used to have European elections. Remember those? In those years, the May elections were postponed to June because it made sense to do so. So there are options available to us in this, rather than simply rolling over to government and saying, let's have our tummy tickled. We can do things differently. And I believe that there are strong arguments that say, if there is a need to postpone elections because of rushing at a consultation on devolution, well, actually, there's actually a pretty good argument for those elections being early in the summer or early in the autumn, away from the consultation period on the devolution, away from the consultation period on local government reorganisation, but actually still in time to make sure they still happen and that the new bodies that are elected, be they this county council or the district councils next year, to be those bodies that are responsible for the implementation of all that in the run-up to and the shadow elections in 2027 for the new unitary authorities. That option could be on the table. All we have to do is ask for it. I'll say a few words about democracy. And apologies to councillors if any of you feel I'm on a bit of a hobby horse here. Well, actually, I am. And I don't often speak personally in this council chamber, because that's not generally the role. Our role is to talk about public policy and things that affect directly our residents. But democracy, I think, is something which is a very fragile candle that is easily snuffed out. It's one of the things that got me interested and motivated to get involved in politics as a kid, as a teenager, very sad, eh? Of the concept of democracy and voting and rights. And if you ask the people of Thailand and Myanmar and Bangladesh about cancelled elections, they'll give you an answer. And it won't be an answer perhaps we'd like. I had the privilege to be part of international monitoring operations for monitoring elections in the former Soviet Union 20 odd years ago on behalf of the Organisation for Security and Cooperation in Europe and part of international missions. And I had the privilege and honour to be in Maidan Square in Kyiv 20 years ago when Yanukovych stole an election from Yushchenko, and there were demonstrations there. I had the privilege to be in Minsk when Alexander Lukashenko stole an election from residents. I had the privilege of walking between tanks in Baku in Azerbaijan when the outgoing president stole an election for his son. We need to think really, really carefully before we think about snuffing out the fragile candle that is democracy. There are choices. There are options. We're being given a choice here on this issue. Nick is right to say that ministers have expressed a preference. They have expressed a preference for us to postpone elections. They haven't made it a requirement. They've given it to us as a choice. Cynically, you could say they've given it to us a choice that they can blame us, you know? And that would be a canny, natty thing to do for a Labour minister. Blame the Conservative county councils for cancelling elections, because then we can say it's therefore not ours. Well, that may be a cynical view, but it is sometimes how politics works. And we need to understand that. We all need to understand that in terms of how we vote on this issue. We were told by Baron Les Taylor's senior civil servant on the call on Tuesday morning that we could apply for the fast-track programme for devolution and at the same time say whether we wanted to postpone elections or not. So it is a matter of choice. We could ask for a postponement for a shorter period than a year and ask for legislation to be fast-tracked, and no doubt others might follow too. The consequence of postponing elections, I believe, is most likely that there won't be county council elections ever again. Likewise, I believe there's a high likelihood there won't even be district elections in 2026 either. It is convenient for government at the moment to say, no elections in 2025. Well, it's going to be even more convenient in a year's time when the shadow authorities are being planned properly, when devolution arrangements are being put in place ahead of the mayoral election in May 2026. So for all of those reasons, I would urge real, real caution in thinking about saying, yeah, let's roll over. Let's roll over, government. We'll postpone the elections this year. I believe we do have a choice on these issues. On the overall balance across those three issues, devolution, local government reorganisation, elections, I think we should go with the devolution. I think we should work through how local government reorganisation should work and get the best possible local government for Hampshire and the Isle of Wight in the long term. But we should equally say no to postponing elections, because democracy is a fragile candle that is easily snuffed out. Don't believe we haven't got a choice. Let's have some confidence in ourselves, colleagues. You know, we've done some amazing things as a council over the years. Our districts have done some amazing things. The cities in Southampton and Portsmouth and over on the island, even if they can't get advice on how to run a council meeting, they've all done amazing things. They really have. Let's have a bit of confidence in ourselves today and say, we want devolution to work. We're prepared to work out local government reorganisation. But we believe in our democracy, and we want to keep our elections. I move the amendment, chairman.
I'm now going to call upon councillor Tree as the leader of the independent group.
Thank you, chairman. So we are an independent group, made up of myself as sole member of the White and Llembourdon Community Party, councillor Parker Jones and councillor Pankhurst as independents, and councillor Wallace as a member of the Green Party. And it is important to acknowledge that distinction. We each have our own individual views and beliefs and will make our own informed choices on how we vote today, including on any amendments. After hearing the discussions today, based on what we sincerely believe is in the best interests of the residents we all serve, which is what it should all be about. I'm grateful the recommendations are to be voted upon separately, as there is no explicit requirement for all to be voted on together and come together. And I believe all members should have the option to support or not support each one in turn, including any of the amendments put forward. So thank you, chairman and leader. On the subject of recommendation A, we can see the benefits of the creation of a combined authority across the wider region, incorporating the Isle of Wight, Portsmouth and Southampton with the Hampshire County Council area, and look forward to hearing more detail in due course about the mayor's role, powers, how they would be held to account between elections, their budget, and how the combined authority would work. We hope the election of the mayor would be a fair progressive system and not simple first-past-the-post. On the subject of recommendations B and C, we can see the benefit of requesting to be included in the devolution priority programme as a fast-track to delivering devolution for our area, in particular when considering the financial situation of Hampshire County Council. One of the most frustrating aspects of becoming a county councillor for me personally has been to witness the lack of political choice because of the finances, and I really do hope there is light at the end of the tunnel for the elected councillors and our fellow residents who we all serve. We note that the local government reorganisation proposals must be submitted to government by autumn 2025 as part of the devolution priority programme and must be submitted regardless, very much linking local government reform with devolution, which is effectively now one project. This is the largest shake-up of democracy for about 50 years, and we do have some concerns. The Hampshire County boundary from the Middle Ages is pretty much the same as when Hampshire County Council was founded in 1889, and the outer boundary is still being used in such a radical shake-up. I want to understand if there is any scope for any boundary review that would consider obvious transport and economic connections. Same applies if using district and borough boundaries, which is the question I asked earlier. I was partly reassured when the leader responded that this was a complex but not ruled out. Some are more currently aligned with an area they serve, such as the larger urban areas, but rural districts such as East Hampshire are made up of various communities. I would like a clear answer on whether any of these boundaries, either county and/or internal district and borough, can be varied in the discussions that will happen and to ensure the districts and boroughs are fully engaged in the make-up of the new unitaries. The Boundary Commission decided it was completely appropriate to create a cross-party parliamentary constituency that includes my division, that includes a large part of Surrey. Transport and economic links were cited, yet such links cannot apparently be considered in this process. The Farnborough order shop built-up area spans the borders of Surrey, Berkshire and Hampshire, yet apparently there is no opportunity for there to be any discussion on any kind of unified council. In fact, this proposed devolution and local government outer boundary will split this area further apart than ever. I should add that it may well be that people don't want what I have suggested, but the point is, it should be on the table for discussion. Nobody has to leave the ceremonial county they live in to have a council that spans across ceremonial county boundaries. The leader reported in the media on 7th of January, was reported, sorry, in the media on 7th of January, as saying he would welcome Bournemouth Christchurch and Poole joining our devolution bid, saying, I can see why it makes complete sense, as councillor Todd referenced earlier. I was initially going to suggest that the rigid wording of today's recommendation rule this out, but note the leader's response to councillor Todd about earlier additional possible changes that could see them join our combined authority in the future. Would the leader commit to having the same conversations with Surrey County Council and the relevant Berkshire unitary authorities, based on what I've said already, possibly even reaching out to neighbouring Surrey Borough councils too? I declare my personal interest as leader of Whitehill Town Council. The White Paper reads that we know people value the role of government at community scale, and that can be a concern when local government is reorganised. We will therefore want to see stronger community arrangements when reorganisation happens in a way councils engage at a neighbourhood area level. We will also rewire the relationship between town and parish councils and principal local authorities, strengthening expectations on engagement and community voice. I have no idea what rewire actually means, but I hope it means positive ability for grassroots community councils to best serve their residents by running services, managing assets and making a positive difference. Some districts like East Hampshire are already fully parished. Presumably, the districts and boroughs with unparished areas, in particular where large towns and cities are unparished, may need to urgently consider creating councils to avoid a gap when unitaries come into force, and that Portsmouth, Southampton and Winchester will need to ensure that official city status is preserved, assuming they each wish to retain this honour. What we hope will never happen is any move to enlarge parishes, where the whole purpose of this tier of local government is to be ultra-local. Can the leader reassure me on this point? Now moving on to recommendation D. Our group have concerns about this. Postponing democracy should always be a last resort and absolutely necessary. I understand that postponement of elections is quite rightly a locally requested decision, and government will not mandate this upon us. It is important to note that this clearly, as Labour's mandate from the general election is completely separate to what this council requests today, where the elected government through its fresh and recent mandate has given us this choice. We all have mandates from May 2021. Boris Johnson was said to be popular on that day, and a lot has happened since then, not just at national level with Ed Davey riding on a jet ski to the Lib Dem party conference, but also with subsequent district and borough elections in the county and the ongoing challenges here on finances and decisions made. Whilst I appreciate this may be a free vote, it could be passed with the will of the majority party members here, even if objected to by the opposition, including the largest opposition party. Whilst I do appreciate elections cost time and money, and the pre-election period potentially creates issues with devolution and local government reform consultation processes, I would still say that it's a slippery slope of setting a precedent where we say it's okay to deny the public their voice for operational and capacity reasons, referencing what councillor House said earlier about where elections have been cancelled and postponed before. We are told this postponement is only for one year, and this is all the current legislation allows. But I am concerned that if the plans are for unitary elections in 2026 or 2027, we would never have a Hampshire County Council election again. We would surely be squatting until the council is abolished, possibly more than halfway into what would have been our new terms, if in 2027 or beyond. To be clear, are we saying that consultations cannot run during the pre-election period? That no other upper-tier council or unitary authority will end up managing to successfully navigate the fast-track whilst holding elections in May this year? Because I understand the actual code on pre-election period says, council publicity should be issued with care during periods of heightened sensitivity. During this time of council resources, sorry, during this time use of council resources, holding events or launching consultations should also be considered. There is no blanket ban. The ordinary functions of councils can continue, but councils should assess whether it could be perceived that they are spending public money to influence the outcome of the election. It should also be noted that the districts and the boroughs actually run the Hampshire County Council election, and the workload sits with the districts and boroughs in that respect. If we request to cancel our elections, but another upper-tier council applies to go on the fast-track and is accepted without asking to postpone elections, and it later transpires that there are no disadvantages to us and actually moving forward at a similar pace, including, I should say, any council that doesn't apply for the fast-track now but ends up running at a similar pace, this would surely be extremely regrettable and not reflect well on Hampshire County Council at all. If we had unequivocal confirmation that there will definitely be either a county or unitary election in 2026, we could be minded to support when weighing up pros and cons. But I don't think anyone today can give that level of commitment. A delay of six months may have been more palatable and acceptable to have best of both worlds, i.e. get submission into government by autumn and then allow democracy to resume as soon as possible. However, I understand that under section 87 of the Local Government Act 2000, the Secretary of State can only change the year of the election, and thus unlikely the government would introduce emergency primary legislation, as the leader clarified earlier. On a personal level, I would want to hold my own seat in any council because the public decide I'm the right person to be their elected representative, not because they're denied the right to make that choice. I would rather lose an election because people want someone else than win by default. For an all-out election, I would always want to take my case to the public I work for. And in the past couple of days, many have expressed grave reservations to me about this matter, even when I've explained the rationale. And I have explained the rationale, because it's very easy for people to obviously say, no, we want an election, and not understand the implications, the pros and the cons. But nevertheless, the majority of people who I speak to and who are communicating with me, and I appreciate that may not be the majority, it's a snapshot, are basically saying elections should go ahead. Firstly, let's remember that although this council will decide whether to request the extension, it is the government who have put the council in a potential position where getting the best outcome for residents means suspending democracy for a period. And I am, for one, I'm disappointed that we're put in this position in the first place, and the better way could not have been suggested for a fast-track option when so much is not guaranteed in terms of timeframes and specific outcomes. And I would just end by saying, it's a big shake-up, lot of change, but I really sincerely hope that what comes out of this in the coming years will be excellent for our residents and give us a great local democracy framework moving forward. And I sincerely hope whatever we decide, that will be the case. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tree. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd actually like to make a start by thinking about our last council meeting. For me, it was memorable, not just because of its length, but because of the deputations For me, it was memorable, not just because of its length, but because of the deputations we had from many members of the public. And those deputations really brought home the impact and human cost when public services failed to deliver what people really need. We heard stories of isolation through a lack of public transport and lost life chances because of financial cuts that we as a council were making. It's in the context of serving residents and delivering decent public services that I have considered the important issues before us today. I can see how devolution brings considerable benefits to our residents, whether this is through developing joined-up public transport strategies so that no community becomes isolated, or ensuring that we have region-wide strategies on skills and employment, climate change and economic wellbeing. As a councillor representing an area of significant deprivation, I look forward to the creation of a strategy that will enable deprivation to be tackled across the whole region. For the first time, this could unlock support from my area, normally denied to us because it's an island of deprivation in a sea of relative affluence, and therefore pots of government funding never come our way. Currently, big-ticket items require bidding to individual pots of money, and often areas of Hampshire miss out due to a lack of joined-up government strategy. So I look forward to a regional transport strategy that can be delivered by a strategic regional authority that covers all of Hampshire, the Solent and Isle of Wight for its people. Perhaps then Basingstoke will finally get its mass rapid transport system, and the Isle of Wight will get some decent ferries. So I see devolution as a real step forward in improving and protecting public services for all of the residents in our region. And most of those are currently threatened by the financial challenges faced by all authorities, and to a certain extent, this makes devolution and the setting up of a combined authority even more urgent. I think it's essential that we apply to be in the priority group to unlock those possibilities as quickly as possible, and to ensure that we maximise the opportunities to redirect any LGR savings back into our region. I do not want us to be in the back of the queue, and I want us to have a mayor in the Council of Regions and Nations as soon as possible fighting our cause. Local government reorganisation is an inescapable fact, and the timetable is the timetable. The finer details of LGR is not really relevant to our debate on devolution, but at some point, we will then need to enter into those LGR discussions with our colleagues in other unitaries, boroughs and districts, and to do that in good faith. By adding preconditions to that, as the amendment suggests, I don't think demonstrates good faith. And so I won't personally support that amendment because of that. I think we need to be open, honest and go with an open mind with all of our partners in this. Elections. Creating the process to implement the devolution will require significant effort. At the same time, work will be underway for LGR planning, both here and boroughs and districts. Officers here are also working extremely hard on coping with precarious immediate financial future. We're already considering savings at twenty-five mark two. And I do not feel that managing elections is an additional burden that would be helpful at this time. Some concerns have been raised, I hear those, about postponing the elections, not cancelling, postponing the elections might create a democratic deficiency or that elections may never happen again. It is my understanding that government can only delay the elections for twelve months, and there is plenty of precedent to consider in this. For example, during Covid elections, Covid elections were delayed but did take place twelve months later. And I've got to be honest with you, in Basingstoke and Dean, our council offices were not firebombed, we did not have big public uprising about a lack of democracy. In fact, my recollection is the public were pretty damn pleased that us councillors, we were getting on with the job. There have been delays and postponements. In twenty twenty-one, elections were postponed to facilitate reorganisations in Cambria, North York, Somerset, and twelve months later, elections took place. There is no evidence, I have not been able to find evidence, to suggest that the postponement would be longer than twelve months or that an election would not subsequently take place. And so I am content with the recommendation as it stands, and I see no value in a suggested amendment which is open-ended, and I don't think the government would be able to deliver in any event. I'd also add that Southampton and Portsmouth do not have elections in twenty twenty-five, and it seems to me sensible that for all the organisations involving devolution, to do so on the same footing. And as politicians, we need to be focused on building the future and not on getting votes. So there also have been concerns raised about democracy in relation to parish councils and devolution being further removed. And as councillor Tree has said, the White Paper does talk about rewiring relationships with town and parish councils. I expect we'll see some more towns with town councils that don't have them at the moment when boroughs and districts disappear, and I think there's a real opportunity there to actually get democracy much closer to our electors. So to sum up, I was elected to represent the best interests of my residents locally and in the wider Hampshire area, and I believe the recommendations, if they stand, will do that, and I am keen that nothing stands in the way of protecting and improving services for the wider area of Hampshire, Solent and Isle of Wight. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. We have one amendment, and the second of that amendment, as said, he will speak later in the debate. I've had no notice of any other amendments from anybody, so we can now proceed to the main debate itself. And just to remind you all, you have four minutes apiece.
May I firstly congratulate the leader on his brilliant exposition of this paper. I'd also like to thank councillor House for having the courtesy to send us his amendment last night. And I also congratulate him on his thoughtful speech today. I haven't got much time, so I'm just going to say that I support the leader on his support for the recommendations. Councillor House, I won't support your amendments. My worry about them is that if any of them were accepted, that would put the likelihood of our application to go on the priority list at risk. That's why I'm not supporting it. The elephant in the room for me, which councillor House did actually centre on, was finance. And for me, finance is ultimately the issue which faces us all and is a problem for us. This is nothing to do with what the central government says. We've made it clear in over many years, Rob Carr has made it clear, that the lack of finance from central government will eventually make us, as an authority, unsustainable. And that is something which gets nearer and nearer as the years go by. So that, for me, is the main issue. As far as finance is concerned, I believe that the White Paper makes it clear that the previous government is responsible for all these ills. It's a pity that they didn't also mention that the real problems of finance are lack of funding for social care, also home-to-school transport, all of these are the main issues which we have, and frankly, if they could be solved, if central government could sort that out, would we be a sustainable government, councillor, because I believe we would. So that's my concern. I believe that the White Paper, we have to take on its face value and hope that it will deliver sufficient funding in the future, not to make us sustainable, but I have my doubts. But I believe we must accept it, work with central government to become a priority for them, and I hope that they will then give us eventually more money to make us as a unitary.
You have thirty seconds left.
Thank you. As a unitary, and a ability for local government to continue for the benefit of our residents, because it is finance which is what we all want, to make local authorities better able to face the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Leytham. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Happy New Year. I find myself in a slightly disturbed situation, because I find that I have agreed with nearly all of what councillor House said, and that's always worrying. I'm not sure I find the devolution thing quite as finely balanced as he does, but I agree with him that it is the option worth going for. I think my problem is with the part of his amendment that deals with reorganisation. Because whilst I don't agree with anything of what he's said, I think there are three or four statements there out of a hundred things we need to take into account going forward. So when we get into the stage where we're actually talking about what reorganisation actually is, and where it goes and what it does, we're all, of course, going to have to talk to the various different organisations, areas of national beauty, whatever else there is. We have to make sure we carry the whole of the community of Hampshire with us, probably not including the fish in the Solent. But apart from that, we need to make sure we get everybody in line. But to be honest, that is not for today, because this debate is really about timing. Devolution is going to happen, the government have made that clear. Reorganisation is going to happen, the government have made that clear. The decision we've got is, do we determine the sequence, or do they? If we want to determine the sequence, we've got two choices: devolution first or reorganisation first. Sorry, I've chosen reorganisation. It looks, from what I've heard today, that we're likely to go for devolution as our first one. So that makes it option one. We then come on to the issue of elections. Now, the government have been absolutely right, they said, 'Of course, it's your decision. You must propose whatever you wish.' You may wish to propose a deferment of the election, just a postponement, not cancellation. It's up to you, it's your choice. But in practice, we all know what Sir Humphrey says and how he says it. When he says that, he says, 'If you choose what I want, you can have what you want. If you choose something different, well, that's your choice.' Sadly, we've got enough people in option one for other counties, so thank you for your interest, Hampshire County Council. You will now default to option three. When we don't get the choice, the government does. So my choice today will be to do what we need to do to give us the driving seat rather than them, and that therefore I will go with the original motion and not the amendments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Parker. Councillor Carpenter.
Thank you, Chairman. I will reluctantly agree with the proposal for the priority devolution plan, it is with reluctance, and the idea of a mayor for the combined authority area of Hampshire, Southampton, Portsmouth and the Isle of Wight. I don't relish the idea of an Andy Burnham character swanning around our area, but if it benefits residents financially and by way of more joined-up services and economy across the region, then I will agree. But devolution and reorganisation of Hampshire, and I do understand the difference between those two, are intrinsically linked, as I think councillor Parker just said. So I will comment on reorganisation, because I think things are going to move fast, and we need to start thinking about it right now. I've always maintained that the two-tier system across Hampshire is confusing for residents, frustrating at times for councillors and unnecessarily costly to everybody. And in a time when money is short for children's services, adult care, all strapped for cash, money and investment stashed away for a rainy day by districts and boroughs, no disrespect, because I know they work really hard, but I don't think it's any longer acceptable or sustainable. So reorganisation of Hampshire into a unitary, supported by good, strong local towns and parishes, made stronger, is a good thing, in my opinion. But I also think it's not necessary going forward to reorganise the boundaries of the existing four upper-tier councils, which will form the new combined authority. Hampshire, in my opinion, again, should remain as one area, and new unitary council areas should not be reorganised across current boundaries, based on arbitrary numbers of residents plucked out of the air by Labour. To me, that's sniffs of political manipulation, and it will cause unnecessary disruption to Hampshire services and vital Hampshire staff operations, plus extra cost, and it will take longer to organise the new councils. So devolution, yes. Delay of elections for that purpose, yes, I agree. Reorganisation, yes, but the reorganisation needs a great deal more detailed, creative and open-minded thinking yet. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Carpenter. Councillor Glenn.
Thank you, Chairman. It'll come as no surprise to you all that I'll be voting in favour of all the recommendations A to D. However, let's go on to the amendments. I found all the work that's been done on amendments very interesting, and as far as I'm concerned, this is work that we should bring into the debate when we have got past the end of this month. Once we've got the word from the Secretary of State that she has agreed to our priority one, which is our focus, and secondly, the request for the deferment, not abolish the abolition, but the deferment of an election, I want to hear all these good themes brought into the debate that we're going to have, and I certainly want to see it on scrutiny. Okay? And it'll be a robust year that we're all going to have, maybe two. Okay? With regards to councillor Tree, I am really impressed with the work you've done, working out the background to the independent opinion, so good for you. And finally, councillor Taylor, can I say I wholeheartedly agree with everything you've said, so congratulations. I think that's the first time I've agreed with the socialists. Okay? Can I just say, the only people who have complained to me by email about the elections being deferred are not represented here. They're all from Reform. Now, I actually emailed them, thinking they were just members of the public, which Reform aren't, of course, and one of them rang me back. And when I explained to him why we're doing this, he went, 'Yeah, right, seems a good idea to me', and that was the end of the discussion. So I think the general public will be quite happy, and they'd won't even care whether we have an election in May or not. So let's not get too caught up in this. Now remember, this is financially led. We've hit the finance iceberg, and this ship is going down as we speak. I've listened to our treasurer for the last few years and watched him basically get older, trying to save us the money so that we can stay in position, but it's just not going to happen. We have taken half a billion out of our budget, and it's not enough. Eighty-five per cent of our budget goes towards children's services and adult services, and it has to be paid because of statutory duties. And it has to be paid because of statutory duties. The rest is going to all the things that matter to most people out there, which are roads, pavements, lighting, et cetera, et cetera. And that can't go on. In adult services, I understand that the cost of care is about a thousand pounds a week. With children's services, we've got applications coming in, especially for special needs, at two hundred a month. Now, I was one of those applicants many years ago, many years ago, when my son was going through a special needs education. His transport costs alone, quite a number of years ago, were twelve thousand pounds a year. The amount of money we're spending on this is awful. And we have to do it. So we can't go on doing what we're doing at the moment.
You have thirty seconds.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Okay. So I like to commend the work that's been done by our officers. I'd also like to commend the work that's been done by previous leaders. Roy Perry, who is our alderman, sitting in the benches up there. I supported you all the time to prevent this from happening, but now we have to go through with it. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Councillor Wallace.
Thank you, chairman. As acknowledged in the White Paper, England has one of the most centralised power structures of any country in the developed world. So whilst I welcome the principle of devolution, I am concerned that the deal put before us by the government risks taking decision-making further away from local people rather than empowering them. And these risks need to be highlighted. In particular, how will local communities get heard? And who will hold mayors to account? On mayors, there's a real risk that we could have a mayor that is only supported by a third of our residents. Some could say that that is already the case as councillors can get elected with only a third of residents' support. But the big difference here is the amount of power that the mayor will hold. The mayor will have significantly more power than local councillors or current local council leaders or even our local MPs. More power over planning, for example, where to build a new town in Hampshire if this is needed to meet the government's new house-building targets. More power over transport, more power over economic development, more power over climate change measures and so on. More power in one person's hands may be considered a good thing if you agree with that person's point of view. However, if you don't agree with the mayor's plan, the new structure means that there is little opportunity to object. Finally, the mayor is imposed for four years, irrespective of how well or how badly they do their job. The mayor is answerable to the electorate only, so unlike current council leaders or indeed even the Prime Minister, who as we've seen frequently in recent times can be changed partway through their term, the mayor cannot be removed if that individual starts going off the rails. Concerns about how to hold the mayor to account is not just my view. Bristol and Liverpool local authorities recently abolished the position of city mayor in part over concerns that it put too much power into the hands of one individual. As I said earlier, for me, the other key question on these changes is how will the local communities get heard? There is a real risk that this devolution deal accelerates the concentration of power into the hands of an ever smaller political elite. For example, of the current eleven elected Metro mayors, ten are from Labour. So perhaps it's not a surprise that Labour are so enamoured with this model. Meanwhile, every year, more people are becoming disillusioned with politics and the political process. The feeling that you are not being represented in the decision-making process is a big part of this issue. Whether intentional or not, the proposed local government reorganisation risks making this situation worse. Combining district authorities together into unitary authorities is likely to mean much larger wards. This combined with the discredited first-past-the-post voting system favours incumbent and makes it harder for a range of voices to be heard, which in turn risks increasing disillusionment with politics. The world has changed. Our residents are no longer just red and blue, nor are they just red, blue, orange and green. We have a fantastic range of people and voices in our country. Our political system needs to modernise so that it can properly represent the people of this country with all our differing views and perspectives. I would like to see genuine decentralisation of power from government with decisions being made as close as possible to the communities they affect. And that uses a proportional representation voting system to ensure that all the different voices of our residents get heard. So overall, whilst I welcome the principle of devolution, I am uncomfortable with the offer that's on the table before us. Devolution and reorganisation must genuinely empower local communities, not distance them from the decision-making processes as this proposal risks doing.
Thank you, councillor Wallace. Councillor Philpott.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I think we need to separate devolution from local government reorganisation. It's regrettable that the government has sought to conflate the two. We may have different opinions on what devolution should look like, but I think that most of us can generally agree that in principle, it's a good thing. However, I feel very differently about the reorganisation proposals. At risk of repeating others in this debate, I want to express my outrage at the way in which the government have gone about this. We're only meeting here today because of an ultimatum issued by the Labour government, publishing their devolution White Paper just a week before Christmas and demanding a response within ten working days. The language of the minister in his letter to the council leaders on the sixteenth of December demonstrated, in my opinion, utter disrespect. The contents of that letter could best be described as blackmail. I've heard that it suggested that the proposals were part of the Labour Party manifesto. Devolution and elected mayors were, but reorganisation on this audacious scale proposed very much was not. I've also heard it suggested that reorganisation proposals are somehow a continuation of what the Conservatives were doing in government. This is also incorrect. These proposals represent nothing less than the top-down regional government that will take decision-making further away from the people. When Angela Rayner was made Secretary of State, she didn't say to Keir Starmer, give me local government and I'll finish the job. It turns out she most likely said, give me the job and I'll finish local government. My gut tells me that I should oppose these measures that the government wants to force on us and vote against. But despite the hostile stance taken by the minister and by the government, I acknowledge that the Labour Party's overwhelming majority. I have given deep consideration as to whether outright rejection is the most sensible way forward. I've come to the conclusion that it would be smarter to accept the vulnerability of our position, agree to enter into negotiation and see where we end up in the autumn because I have doubts as to whether this government's dystopian dreams will ever be realised. The government envisaged the dissolution of one hundred and sixty-four district councils and twenty-nine county councils to be replaced by a, as yet, not fully determined structure and to be enacted over a period of just two to three years. The minister says he does not underestimate the challenges his reorganisation faces. But let's just consider the sheer scale of what needs to be done. The changes involve staff and recruitment, premises, debts, investments, IT systems, pensions, contracts, council tax harmonisations, governance arrangements and so on. It will cost tens of billions of pounds and will lead to years of upheaval. And all that time, councils will be required to deliver business as usual. If this drags on, and I suspect it might, we may be told that the 2026 elections will have to be postponed too. Then all those Liberal Democrat district councillors, where they're in control, will be calling for the 2026 elections to be cancelled. Remember, if elections are cancelled, it'll be the Labour government that will cancel them. So I'm going to vote for this recommendation, not because I think, I like it, but I don't, but because I think it probably represents the least worst option.
Thank you, councillor Philpott. Councillor Brandt.
Thank you, chairman. Like many others who have spoken today, I have concerns regarding the significant proposals on devolution and combined authorities. However, I am prepared to support joining the priority programme as it is clear devolution accompanied by local government reorganisation will happen in our area and councils will be required to submit reorganisation proposals. However, I am extremely uneasy regarding the proposals to form such huge unitary authorities and lose well-run district and borough councils. To my mind, this would create vast, remote councils with weak links to local places and the capability to deliver the best-based services that are essential to creating jobs, growth, better health and more prosperity to our communities. I can find little evidence by supporting much larger councils that they will be more effective. But there is clear evidence that they tend to have a negative impact on the trust of councillors, public engagement and voter turnout. I really feel that it is unlikely that councils with more than five hundred thousand people would be workable or desirable. The White Paper does suggest that local places will be able to make the case for smaller unitary councils if that is right for the local area. Let's hope that once talks start, common sense will prevail. I also find it disappointing that there's been very little engagement from government on what could amount to the biggest changes to local government in fifty years. And I'm particularly concerned that very little sign of costs has been shown or where the funding will come from. All after this Labour government keeps referring to the black hole that they inherited. Many of my friends and colleagues from Faram, those some who are double-hatters, have great concerns regarding the possibility of the Borough Council ceasing to exist as a borough and being served by a new, remote unitary council. This would be most unpopular for a council that has a track record of delivering the very priorities that devolution White Paper focuses on. Firstly, boosting housing delivery. We have a garden village being built in Faram named Wellborn. And as well as that, we have a local plan that meets the housing needs. A growing economy, which has seen the Solent Enterprise Zone at Dalers grow faster than ever envisaged, with multinational organisations basing themselves there. There is a town centre regeneration programme and the purchase of the shopping centre quite recently, which is encouraging local companies and businesses. And of course, we've also got the new Faram Live Theatre and Entertainment venue, providing first-class acts. And this is providing-
You have thirty seconds left.
Sorry. And this is providing further assistance to the local economy. So, Mr Chairman, I feel Faram is a very stable council and is already working with other authorities. So why does it need to change? Finally, may I mention parish councils? And I'm sure many areas, village communities, this is of assistance. But the urban Farams, such as Faram, would be difficult to find very appropriate in their boundaries. I will be supporting the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Brandt. Councillor Reid.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I want to say a few words about the combined authority approach and then a little bit about reorganisation. They are separate items. I will be supporting the original motion today and I can't support the Liberal Democrat amendment, reasoned though it was. On devolution to combined authorities, what we need to understand is that this actually spells the end of what the last government tried, which was bottom-up planning. What we will have is an elected mayor with responsibility on advice from the constituent authorities for determining where large chunks of development go, where the strategic planning of roads will go and lots of issues like that. From the point of view of us and the voters, it is going to be top-down planning again rather than the bottom-up approach that's been planned before. Let's just recognise that and say that that's what's going to happen. Now, with reorganisation, we can't carry on as we are. We're not masters of our own destiny because the government controls the purse strings. And we have to accept, I think, that change is going to come because if it doesn't come, what will happen is we face more and more underfunding and the people who suffer are the people who need our help. And we've got to recognise, we're not here to preserve the life of Hampshire County Council. We are here to preserve the lives of the vulnerable adults who need help, the children who need help, the many people in our society that we were elected to represent and to help. And if the only way in which we can continue to provide them the essential services that they need is to change the structure, then we have to change the structure. But at the same time, we have to make the point that if we give the government what they want, in return, we expect them to start funding local government properly and to let us help the people who need our help. And if we approach this debate from the point of view of the voters, the vulnerable people who need our support, there is only one direction that we can take in 2025 and that is to support the direction of travel that the leader has proposed and to get local government strong again. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reid. We've got nine speakers, which will just about fit into the period of time between now and half past one. But are there any, if there are any other people that want to speak that haven't yet pressed their buttons, please do so now and I can then make a decision about lunch at one. I don't see any others, so I'll continue. And provided it stays with that number, we will continue our proceedings until half past one, where we hope we will be in a position to finish the debate. Councillor James.
Thank you, chairman. I stand up in speaking in support of the amendments that are being made. In relation to the combined authority mayor, it was in the manifesto, I think it's very much government's ambition, I think it's going to happen. And I don't see much value in opposing it. And on balance, it probably is the right thing to do. My concern is around the way that local government reorganisation is being delivered. You said yourself, the leader said himself earlier at the start of the meeting, his opening line was about the importance and magnitude of this decision, how massive it is and what an impact it's going to have on people's lives. And then we find ourselves in a situation where it's been very rushed. I want to first of all deal with the five hundred thousand minimum. For those of you who are as sad as I am, you would have spent most of Christmas looking at maps of Hampshire and working out how you did it. I think councillor Philpott's support for what's being proposed might change when he realises that his ward will cease to be part of Gosport but become part of Basingstoke coastline. Councillor North may find it difficult to explain to his residents why it's now known as Upper New Forest. So I do think we need to look at the numbers very seriously. I have some, I don't like the idea of the Greater Manchester model just being dropped on Hampshire. Now, I appreciate that negotiations that will happen after. But I think it's really important we lay that marker and the amendment seeks not to restrict or constrain, but to lay the marker to central government that they may have to rethink the half a million because it ain't going to work. The second thing as well is, like councillor Wallace mentioned it, about creating communities and keeping communities together and not having this sort of, you know, I'm not quite sure how people in Hording will feel about their DC committee being run by councillors in Andover. It can be achieved and it may mean in some cases that boundaries need to change. This is a decision that's going to last fifty, hundred, hundred and fifty years. For government to say we don't really want to because it means doing some new legislation is frankly lazy. I'm sure they can do a bit of legislation, bear in mind the magnitude of what they're doing to people's lives. Likewise with the elections, they want to defer them for a year and no more than a year and not less than a year because otherwise we've got to lay legislation. We are going to have to work very hard over the next three years to deliver local government reorganisation and support the new incoming Metro Mayor or whatever they call him. I think government could do a bit of work as well and two bits of legislation is not asking too much of them. And I don't think we should shy away from asking Labour to work. I'm sure already people are getting their Labour isn't working slogans out from years ago. The other thing about the local elections, I think, is a very weak argument to say they're cancelled. We seem to be saying we could not possibly have instability in 2025 whilst we're in the business of negotiation. Instead, we need to move that potential instability to 2026 Instead, we need to move that potential instability to 2026 when we're actually making the changes that have now been agreed. That doesn't make any sense. I look back through the last couple of authorities that have changed and I can understand why county councils cancelled their elections. In places like Somerset, it was the entire county that was becoming a unitary authority. The same in County Durham, the same in North Yorkshire, the same in, in a lot of areas. In fact, even Buckinghamshire as well. And even the other areas, the county was being split in two. That was it. Obviously, we're much bigger and therefore actually rather than the county consuming district functions, we're very much the districts that are going to have to merge and consume county functions, which means that stability is probably needed more at district level than county level. So the excuse to say we can't have elections in 2025 has frankly disappeared because whilst our officers have got enormous amounts to do politically in districts. So I do think we should be saying very clearly that we would like to hold local elections. If it can be moved by a month, a simple bit of government legislation can fix that, then so be it. But I think it should carry on. To councillor Glenn's point, if we decide to cancel elections, that's saying to reform we're running scared. Well, I'm not running scared. I want to take them on and I want to beat them at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor James. Before I ask councillor Williams to speak, I thought we'd have a five minute comfort break and reassemble at quarter to.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr Chair. Local representation matters. Individuals and communities need to have trust in their local authority, which is charged with acting in their best interests, regardless of which political party may be in charge at a local level. Residents need to be reassured that the framework, model, structure and indeed the geographical area that they are represented within has a local authority that is able to act in their best interests. We do not live within boundaries, we live within communities and that is why it is important that the local authority should represent the community in which one lives. If a local authority is too large in terms of the number of residents it represents or geographical area is too great, or a single city within a local authority's boundaries is getting all the attention from that local authority, with the outlying towns and villages being deprioritised, there is a real risk that communities will suffer. That said, effective, efficient and smaller unitary authorities can work and are able to deliver the services that their residents need. Now, I just want to pause because all of what I have said so far are not actually my words. They are from Hansard, spoken by Conservative MP Robbie Moore in February 2023 during his local authorities' boundaries bill, where he proposed something very similar to what the Labour government are putting for us today. Much of what he said, I completely agree with. Following his speech, the Labour shadow minister for local government responded by suggesting that local government reorganisation was misselling the solution that the answer to local residents' woes and daily challenges is to create a unitary authority, all at a time where local authority is already working with shoestring budgets within the Treasury's ever tightening grip. Perhaps Labour should reflect on their position in opposition and consider better funding local government as well as not delaying adult social care reform until 2028, although Boris Johnson too promised reform in 2019 and did not materialise either. But I digress and shall instead focus on the two areas in which I'm most concerned about before us today, the 500,000 minimum figure for new authorities and postponing elections. 500,000 is too large and too inflexible to reorganise the local, local government in Hampshire. It could well lead to communities such as Wickham, Whitley and indeed Bishopswaltham being merged into the same authority as Basingstoke, Hart and Rushmore. These are very different communities that look towards the Solent area and not towards the north of Hampshire. This number has to be lower and more flexible. Postponement of elections. Our democratic society simply must not accept a year's delay to elections. In our history, as has been mentioned, elections have only been delayed because of world wars, foot and mouth epidemic, by one month only, Covid and only at the point where some councils ceased to exist. No matter how fast we go, Hampshire County Council will still be in here, here, still exist in 2026, likely 27, likely 28. There is no realistic possibility that a new Hampshire, New Hampshire unitaries will be ready by 2026, so elections must go ahead this year. I was only elected two months ago, but even I can see there is no mandate for us to be deciding on the long term future of those that we currently represent. So I go back to what Conservative MP Robbie Moore said and I urge those across the floor to vote to ask the government to be flexible with their 500,000 figure, as well as stand up for democracy and support the amendment to suspend the elections, not for a year, but for the shortest possible time.
Councillor Porter.
Thank you very much. I just want to talk on the amendment about the democratic mandate. Voting doesn't have to take place in May, it could be later. And as we've explored today, it could be something that's managed and sorted out very quickly by government if they want to show the public that actually who you vote for really matters. It's clear that the only having the 2021 mandate is not enough. It's not relevant to serve the public, as other people have said here today. It's already a very different world in 2025 than it is in what it was in 2021. And it's critical that we're here to serve the public. It's critical for our council to represent the public as they stand now, not as they stood in 2021, not four years ago. So I do support, support the amendment to hold elections later in the year. It won't hold up the process if we've got going and we've come forward to the government by the autumn, and that's early autumn, not Christmas. And it will provide that basis of councils relevant to manage this council from 2025 up to 2028 or possibly 2029. I do want Hampshire, however, to have a place on the council of nations and mayors, whatever they're going to call it. I want us to be there at the table, having those, that deal. I was part of the Hampshire 2050 conversation regarding the officer, the offer from the previous Conservative government, based on the tiering system. And when we looked at what those tiers offered, it actually was so small that it was like putting lipstick on a very short of money pig and we all agreed that it wasn't what we wanted to go for. So I actually think that we should be not only saying what we want here today, but we should be putting a mandate for this council to think very seriously about how we tackle adult social care, how we tackle send, and we should be using that as part of our bargaining position. It surely must be a conversation that every single other county council is having within their council chambers. Surely we should be putting that together and making that point because if the government want us to do this and want it to work, they need our help to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Collett.
Thank you, Chairman. This isn't World War One or World War Two and nor is it Covid. They were legitimate reasons to delay elections. This is purely a convenience. And as has been said, it's easy to get legislation through Parliament if a government wants to, to allow a variation to what the rules currently say. In a year's time, are we seriously, if we're electing a mayor and electing district councils, going to have county council elections then? No, no, we'll do another one year delay. And so it goes on. It's a very dangerous slippery path. And in answer to councillor Philpot, there's a range of Liberal Democrats here who are ready to put ourselves forward and face the electorate. Chairman, the main reason I have stood up is I was born in Hampshire and I spent most of my life in Hampshire. I'm a proud Hampshire Hawk and I've got my Hampshire tie on with a Hampshire rose, which we all used to be able to buy as county councillors many years ago in the good old days. I look at what we're being offered in terms of the consequential local government review. And I look at my own part of the county and it's a similar situation to that with Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole. I live in a very large conurbation of around 350,000 population. Probably most of you don't recognise that. You think, hang on, no you don't. But half of our conurbation is the other side of the county boundary in Camberley, Farnham, Mitchett, and you said my own patch then, Mitchett, Frimby, Frimby Green and a little bit in Berkshire in Sandhurst. The Blackwater Valley conurbation has really suffered from being split by county boundaries. Yet once again, there's another review coming along and we're not even allowed to consider that. I'm, I'm sorry that the councillor House's amendment has been rather put aside as a partisan amendment. I know that wasn't his intention. I'm actually not 100% happy with it myself because in clause C little three, I would have preferred it said district and county boundaries could be looked at as part of this process. Well, I'm glad we're having separate votes on each of the elements on this and I thank the leader for that. But I will be supporting most parts of that, probably all of it at the end of the day. But coming back to Blackwater Valley, back in the 1980s, we had a Hampshire rail study. Consultants Steer, Davis, Gleev were asked to do it. But when we did it, we recognised that actually Blackwater Valley was a little bit different and a separate study was done there jointly with Surrey County Council. And I still have the documents at home. It had a brilliant set of proposals in there that would cost around £10 million. Lot of money, isn't it? We were building the Blackwater Valley Road then, the A331, at a cost of £180 million. But none of that was ever taken up in that rail study and I've raised it every two or three years ever since then and can never get anybody interested. Blackwater Valley is split down the middle and it's on the periphery and it's never been Hampshire's priority to do that. When Marks and Spencer and Tesco was built at the Meadows, many of you will know that, large superstores, there's a gyratory there at the three county boundary and it's a dog's breakfast. The developers paid for a proper solution. I've seen it half a minute, Chairman, to save you reminding me. The developers paid for the proper solution for that.
You've got 30 seconds.
I tried. Yeah, quite. But the money went to Berkshire County Council and they spent it on a road to Bracknell. And they gave us an absolute dog's breakfast at the Meadows gyratory. There are countless examples of where the Blackwater Valley conurbation has lost out because we're split into two, actually three different counties. We should at least be able to discuss that as part of this local government review. So that's why I'm not enthusiastic about what's coming down the track on the LGR and I will be pushing for that as time goes on. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Collett. Councillor Kemp-Gee.
Thank you, Chairman, very much indeed. Every, every member in this.
Every, every member in this council chamber today will be aware of the importance of officers, local government officers, all across wider Hampshire in these considerations. And I think it's important, if I may, to dwell for a moment on the Hampshire Pension Fund. The Hampshire Pension Fund is a very considerable entity with over a hundred and sixty thousand members, and if you include partners and close family, it could be said to affect the wellbeing of over three hundred thousand people in Hampshire. We're all very aware that for all these changes to be done and done well will require great diligence and goodwill on behalf of all our officers and staff. And therefore it's very important that a major plank of their employment, namely the pension fund, is handled in a sensible and sympathetic way. The pension fund is now worth over ten billion pounds in assets and will also is expected to play a major part in new investment in the new combined authority in terms of infrastructure investment. Therefore, where this pension fund is established across the unitaries as it is at the moment, because it is the pension fund for Portsmouth and Southampton and all our district councils, where it is settled, where it is organised and how it is run, is very much in our interest for it to be handled sensibly and sympathetically and put right up there as one of the main priorities of what we're considering today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Kemp G. Councillor Henderson.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe that devolution is a good thing. It gives us much more ability to serve the communities we know well and respond in a much more agile way to people's needs. For children and young people, I really believe it would enhance partnership working. An example would be a partnership such as Adopt South. I also think it will provide significant future opportunities in terms of skills and training. Our young people must be top of our priorities, along with our residents. I support the original paper presented by the leader. I think we need to do everything to ensure we are on the priority list, and we also need an adequate period to find out the best restructuring solution. Thank you.
Councillor Parker James.
Thank you very much. Whilst I was reading this, I had always in the forethought of my mind, my residents and our most vulnerable. And so there is, there are elements that I would personally disagree with. However, I always feel that I would be doing a disservice to my residents if I did not support devolution, because how on earth could I say to them, look, there's this new Council of Nations and Regions and we don't have a seat at that? So I absolutely do believe that I would support the devolution and that we should be fast-tracked so that we are helping to set our direction. When it comes to local government reorganisation, it's always really hard because we all have a heart tug to our local areas and to what we know. But then I think about our most vulnerable and the difficulties that are being faced for our young people with their mental health, our older residents in social care. And councillor Reed said a lot of this far more eloquently than I could. However, it is with them in mind that I think, yes, absolutely. If this is about ensuring that my residents can access the services that they need and that there is still a public sector providing those services for them in the future, then yes, I have to support that. I do find it very difficult about the election, but I also understand that our staff are under enormous pressure. They will be under enormous pressure to work on this, not only at this level, but also at the local, at local districts and borough levels. And I don't think they should be forgotten, all of this. We're the ones sitting here taking this decision, but it will be the officers and the staff that will be asked to do a lot of this work, and it will take up a lot of their time. I would much prefer to think that we might only delay slightly for perhaps six months. But on balance, at the end of the day, I need to do what is best for my residents, and that's given, ensuring that my residents have services in the future and that my residents have a voice in the new structures that are coming. So I will be supporting the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Parker James. Councillor Wade.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, devolving power and governance down to people is a positive, isn't it? But sitting here today, what decision we're making, I can't help thinking it's a bit like turkeys voting for Christmas, and nobody wants to be a turkey at Christmas, does it? Most members in this room, probably all of them, don't really want to see the end of the county council, nor the twin hatters, the district or the boroughs they sit on, nor the staff and any members of the public you talk to, really, they're not really, they're not really mad on this either. The Labour Government infused by the previous Conservatives' government desire to do devolution have come in full tilt to get it done. Where have we heard that before? And how well did that go? Yet our challenge is to get the best for the people of Hampshire, so we go in early to have a measure of influence over the fate of local government in this county. But we're actually going to vote on a ballpark future with no detail. And what will it look like in the end beyond a few vague outlines? A figure of five hundred thousand for unitary authority does not relate to the local area or circumstances, it does not deliver for a community, does not take into account the communities, the natural environments, the different natures and nuances of our districts and boroughs. The type of governance these areas currently have worked for their communities, the type of services they have continued to meet the needs. Whatever future we go for, it needs to blend areas of similar nature, not stuck together by an arbitrary number. But what concerns me in this process, I see nothing regarding the views of the people of Hampshire beyond some vague promise of consultation long after the die is cast. I see no engagement by the public bodies, national parks and towns and borough councils who currently work hand in glove with the districts and boroughs. But what concerns me most will be the apprehension of those that need our services, the old, the young and the vulnerable. I see nothing to reassure them or us that the care they need will continue through this process of change. Now, the democracy is at the heart of our nation's governance. The right to vote for or against sitting politicians to effect change in how we are governed at all levels, including our own, is sacrosanct. Therefore, I do not agree with postponing the elections for another year. I can understand the short delay while, as councils concentrate on the proposals, we have no choice, we must work on them, but let the people have their say at the ballot box in twenty twenty-five. It is their democratic right to decide on us, let us not deny them. It's for these reasons I support the Liberal Democrat amendments, because we don't need to act like turkeys, and it isn't Christmas. The people of Hampshire deserve better. We can improve the recommendations with these amendments, add our council stamp on the local government's vague and undetailed proposals. Support these amendments for the residents in our divisions, because that will help us get the best result for the people of Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wade. Councillor Drew.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I used to be a hurdler, not, not one that made fences, just to point that out, as some wag from the parish council suggested yesterday evening, but someone who had to run over ten hurdles in a hundred or a hundred and ten, ten metres. And the timing of that was absolutely crucial, the eight steps to the first hurdle and the two in between each one. And a lot of the debate we've heard this morning and this afternoon has been about all of the next steps. If we want to get to that first hurdle, it's absolutely crucial that those first eight steps are carefully planned so you arrive and get over that first one, so you can then do step two and step, hurdle two, hurdle three and hurdle four. Now, I thought it was useful actually to go through the amendment that was put, that was proposed, to highlight some of the interesting elements that I actually agree with, but their hurdle two, three and possibly four. The idea of needing five hundred thousand population, well, yes, I agree that it probably needs to be smaller, particularly in the rural areas where there's a lot of distance between each of the major centres. But that's not for us to say to government now. In others, talk to other partners involving national park authorities, town and parish councils. Well, thank you for the person that mentioned that. The white paper mentions parishes three times in conjunction, in connection with talking to the parishes and communicating with them. Well, I've already been doing that, and I think that's important. I think that the, the, the fourth point on here was to do with local government reorganisation, adequately consider how to ensure sustainable operation. Frankly, if the government thinks that this, any reorganisation that's hurdle three, four or five, is going to save sufficient funds to sort out adult social care, they're delusional. It probably needs an adult social, national adult social care network, and we can then focus on providing local services to local people and gaining the benefit and support from them for doing that. And as for the idea of postponing the election for, what was suggested, a short delay, that's not really very specific, is it? Twelve councils apparently are being considered for this fast-track or this priority scheme, where the government has said, well, ask for a year's delay, we think that's about right. We've heard from the leader and he says, well, having listened to other councils who've done it a year, sounds about right. I'm entirely happy to, to back that. As for the suggestion that these elections are being stolen, they certainly were in Ukraine at one point, in Belarus. Mr Putin steals elections by choosing the candidates who stand against him, and then his spokespeople, spokesman who said, was asked about the democratic process, he said, oh, in Russia, we have the finest democracy in the, on the planet, and anyone who says not, I'll have them arrested and thrown in prison. So, look, we're not talking about stealing elections, we're talking about a sensible and reasonable delay. And yes, thirty seconds, thank you. My final request, but it is, I know it is hurdle two and hurdle three or perhaps even more, is to request that we have the ability to call our mayor a Shire Reeve. That is an Anglo-Saxon name prior to Sheriff, and it's from where Sheriff comes from, not that we would, but we have the option to do that. But more, more on that when we get to hurdle two, three, four and five. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Drew. Councillor Ford.
Sorry, you were looking over there, so I assumed it was me. Councillor Crawford. My apologies, my apologies, councillor Crawford. So I'd like to look to the future, if I may. So the powers, the functions and the funding that are set out in the white paper are attractive to Rushmore residents and businesses. We are well placed and ready to play an active role in the new strategic authority, so we see every reason to move forward at pace in the new programme. On transport, Rushmore has the entry points for key road and rail routes serving all parts of the new strategic authority. On skills and employment support, Rushmore has two of the top performing colleges in the country. Only yesterday, the principal of Farborough College of Technology briefed our councillors about their ambitious plans for the future. Particularly in engineering, distance learning, two-year degrees, apprenticeships for sixteen to nineteen-year-olds and lifelong, long learning options for post-employment. Rushmore is also a hub of industry and local businesses are actively supporting this vision. On housing and strategic planning, Rushmore is keen on a programme to support affordable housing provision through a strategic place partnership with Homes England and to use public sector land in our area to meet the housing target set by the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government. On economic development and regeneration, Rushmore provides great opportunities for growth of science, engineering and technology-based industries within easy reach of London and the south of Hampshire. And town centre generation, regeneration in Farborough and Aldershot are key priorities. Rushmore has experience of partnership working in arts and culture, so we are keen to extend to the Department of Culture, Media and Sport to maximise culture, heritage and sport spending in place as envisaged in the white paper. On environment and climate change, Rushmore has just adopted a new sustainability policy and is looking forward to playing a part in moving towards net zero as soon as practicable with the new funding that will be available. Also, with the largest site of alternative natural green space in England and other nature reserves, country parks and sites of special scientific interest, Rushmore has an important contribution to make in delivery and monitoring of local nature recovery strategies. Health and wellbeing is a key strategic issue for Rushmore, which contains three areas of multiple deprivation in Farborough and Aldershot. One so-called lower-level super output area in my division has been the most deprived in England in terms of residents living on pension credit. These are elderly Gurkha veterans and their wives who have settled in Aldershot Town Centre. And so we could go on, but I would say that, do we really want to forego this opportunity to have the powers, the functions and the funding? Or should we press ahead now at pace? Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you councillor Crawford. Councillor Ford.
Thank you, Chairman. I will be brief. May I firstly just turn the clock back three hours and thank the leader for his introduction and his attempt to simplify what is clearly not a simple issue? So thank you for that, leader. We are here to discuss two linked but separate issues, devolution today, and to my mind there is only one option, and that is option one, and local government reform at a later date. Do we need local government reform? We probably all agree we do. And I often say, if we started the world again, would we do it as it is now? No, we wouldn't. There's concerns, of course, about local government reform regarding the timing, the five hundred thousand-sized authorities proposed, boundaries, and in fact it creates a reverse devolution, it pushes decisions further up. However, taking option one does give us more time to sort these details out. Moving on to election deferral, the amendment has suggested, as councillor Drew said, a short delay. Is that a month? Is it three months? Is it five months? Is it six months? Now, I don't think the government's going to wear this, and to my mind, it puts a huge risk upon the acceptance of us fast-tracking in option one. This isn't, to my mind, a pick and mix option. Have I had concerns raised to me about the election possibly being deferred for a year? No, I haven't, but similar to councillor Glenn, I've received a number of what I'd call political templates. I think we all know where they've come from, as councillor Glenn suggested. But to my mind, delay, if we delay by a year and that means we get it right, that is the way to go. So I can't support the amendments, but I will be voting for the motion as it stands. And if I could say, the justification for that was very well made by councillor Taylor. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Ford. Councillor Cooper. Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I actually say at this point that I couldn't reach the button in time and we declared our interests? So, I declare my interest as a Test Valley Borough councillor as well as a Hampshire County councillor. While I'm on my feet, very, very briefly, I think we need to bear in mind that we've had a debate today which of amazing quality. I find myself agreeing with councillor Reed and councillor Philpot and councillor House all at the same time, so a unique occasion in more ways than one. Can I also say that actually, the thing to bear in mind here is the staff. We've had mention, I think, from councillor Kemp G about the huge numbers of people who are in the pension fund. Those people work for the borough councils, the district councils, the unitary authorities and for the county. And they are all going to have their lives turned upside down by reviews and by work being done to see if they've been made redundant or not, if the case may be, over the next two or three years. I think we need to take their interests at heart, because that really is what makes this county tick. We can't serve our public unless our officers and officers at the boroughs are working hard at their job. So, please bear that in mind. I'm going to support part of the motion, but we'll see how that goes when we come to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. Councillor Warwick.
Yes, thank you so much, Chairman. And just following on from what councillor Cooper's just said, I've sat here and really enjoyed the debate and the questions, probably one of the best sessions we've had as a councillor, so thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to our leader, councillor Adams King, and to our senior officer team led by Carolyn, Gary and Rob, to acknowledge the many hours largely unseen work they've put into this process over the past few months. This was particularly so when the English Devolution White Paper was published just nine days before Christmas without any leak, so we really did have no idea what the detail would be within that paper. And we're all aware that the Holy Grail of devolution has eluded many county leaders despite their considerable efforts. But on this occasion, I have observed Nick working tirelessly, tirelessly even, usually over the weekends and holidays, holding an unprecedented number of meetings, calls on teams in person with councillors, with government ministers, with local authority leaders, with opposition leaders, MPs, the press, and anyone really that will care to listen to him, all about explaining devolution. And in fact, the speech we heard today, he had on the back of an envelope with just four points, and I always worry that he might keel over one day, and I said, where's your speech? And he said, it's there. So, I'm glad, I'm glad he managed to give it, because it was so thorough and it explained things in a very simple way, so I just wanted to say thank you to him. And I'm sorry, we have ruined your Christmas, but I'm glad you're still with us. During the past few months also notable has been the unprecedented and commendable cross-party discussion and collaboration. So long, may it continue. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Warwick. And I've got councillor Harvey, who I think pressed the button rather late, so I would be grateful if you're very brief.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be as brief as possible. When I look at all this, I have to agree that we need to be in front of everything. What has bothered me in the past is, you know, not having a voice from our residents. Yes, we're supposed to represent them, but I think we can't represent everybody because not everybody talks to us. But what concerns me the most is that if we do get rid of district and borough councillors, are we looking to the parish councils to take this on? And if we are, they're going to want to be paid. So, you are taking out a lot of chief execs and things like that, but you're also putting in another layer, because in my division, I have two parish councils. On Monday, I have to go and tell them, you know, exactly what happened today and why, and they're going to say to me, because they already have, is it going to be down to us, what happens locally? Well, the answer to that obviously is yes. It partly is now, but I do, I am concerned that their numbers are dwindling. People at this moment don't want to be representing areas because they don't know what's going on. And, you know, neither do the public. Public don't know the difference between parish, district and county anyway, you know, as is adequately shown when I have my surgeries. And to that end, I've invited the parish chairman and the district councillor to come, because I get all sorts of questions asked of me that actually I don't have to solve, so they're there to do it for me. And when the people come, they say, oh, I thought you did that. No, 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 because they really do not know the difference. But I think this reorganisation is going to be very hard for them to swallow. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Harvey. And finally. Oh, councillor Todd.
Yes, of course. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Rightly, many people today have spoken about anchoring on the best interest of our residents. As we speak, Hampshire Hospitals has declared a critical incident, but we're not talking about the government's plans for social care and how that could have helped in this situation, because there is no government plan for social care. We're discussing reorganising the bodies that will deliver social care. We're in the bizarre situation that we could have decided how we're going to reorganise the local, the bodies that deliver social care before we even know what the government's plans for social care might be. The news is full of discussion about child protection, but we're not talking about the implication for our outstanding children's services and child protection. And it's hard to see how a huge reorganisation will make vulnerable children safer. It's a distraction, not better care. Now, I listened very carefully to which parts, if any, of our amendment people disagreed with, but apart from the delay to voting, I didn't really hear very much. Councillor Reed even called it reasoned. There's a first time for everything. No one today has backed the 500,000 limit. Councillor Bryant, I thought, was particularly eloquent, rightly referring to the risk of huge, vast remote councils that would not be workable or desirable. We agree and ask you to vote accordingly. Several asked for care in choosing boundaries, including councillor Collett's discussion of our boundary with Surrey, and dare I say it, the leaders' discussion of our boundary with BCP. Others talked about listening to parishes. There's also agreement that we need to confront the financial issues. Let's be clear, nothing in the government's proposals makes income go up and the costs of adult social care and children's services go down, quite the opposite. We've heard a lot in recent times about the CCN analysis in 2020 that so many are citing, that the government are citing, that is driving a lot of the discussion about scale. Well, if you read that carefully, it shows an average saving per year per county council of, at the highest level on average, of £28 million a year as a result of unitarisation. That is not going to cover a £182 million gap. It's not enough. None of this can work or will work without a financial solution, and we have to step up, speak out and confront the government with that reality. And as councillor Philpot and others have highlighted, the costs and complexities of this are almost certainly underestimated on top. So, let's come to the question of voting. Councillor Taylor talks about elections not being helpful. Right now, I can understand why the Labour Party might think this. Building the future and not on, spending a time building the future and not on getting votes. I think our residents deserve to have a say on what that future is. The people who will lead this process need a fresh democratic mandate. The people of Hampshire deserve to say who they want to work through this process. We need a bit of spine in all of this. We should be proud of our tradition of local government in Hampshire and stand up for our democracy. There was a reference to Shire Reeves. We've also had town reefs since the ninth century, locally chosen mayors since the 12th and the 13th century, before Parliament met under Simon de Montfort, by the way, locally elected councils since the 1830s, and the long journey from there to today's democracy. And incidentally, I'm with councillor Wallace in wanting to strengthen our democracy compared to where we are today, certainly not go backwards. And that would have been in the version of the Liberal Democrat amendment that councillor House referred to that we didn't put forward, rather than the one that mostly seems to have captured the council's consensus. Our job is to serve the public, not the government. Our mandate comes from the people of Hampshire, not the government, and we should be prepared to say so. If something, we believe something is right, we should say so. I realise some aspect, democracy may make some aspects of planning for a combined authority harder.
You bring your remarks to it.
But that is a price we should pay. Democracy may cost, but it also matters. It's worth it, and I believe we can make it work. If you agree to our amendments to Part C, and most of you seem to from what you've said, vote for them. And if you support for democracy, support democracy, back our amendment as a whole.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Can I now ask the leader to sum up the debate?
Mr Chairman, thank you. I think what I'd like to do is, first of all, to thank you all for what has been a reasoned and a professional and eloquent debate. You've all put your thoughts forward, no matter what they might be, particularly well today, and it's a credit to us all, it's credit to this council, that we have this debate at this point with such an important decision in front of us. We're going to try and just answer as many of the different points that were made as briefly as I possibly can. I think it's important to remember that if we are talking about the removal of the fire authority and the police and to have those powers under the mayor, as Keith mentioned, that there's nothing to stop there still being those separate parts of the fire and police and that accountability there. And that's why it's important for us to spend our time making sure that we get this decision right, that we get this negotiation right, that we get the structure of the combined authority right. And because it is, and I'm an optimist, you know, the experience elsewhere gives us different templates against which we can work. And every time there has been a round of power being looked at by government when there's been a round of devolution, each of those different mayoral authorities that exist have received more powers from government. And so it's an ever-changing picture for them, but also an ever-increasing amount of local power that is given to people. And if you look at the people like Andy Burnham or the mayor of the West Midlands or the mayors in the North East, they increasingly are able to influence their areas for the better. And I completely agree with Keith about the pace. The pace is far too quick. We should be taking much more reasoned decisions around this. We should be able to bring back our suggestions to government, we should be able to look at the different options that we have, and we should be able to ensure that we represent our area correctly in that process. The sad fact is that there is no, no local government reorganisation option on the table to us, nor is there one that gives us anything longer than the end of this year to make that decision. And so I come back to that point about the need for us to go with this first option, because it gives us the longest possible time. There are benefits to looking at devolution alongside local government reorganisation, because if we come to that Somerset example, in Somerset, the transfer from county and districts to unitary authority has happened without devolution attached to it. There, it's quite right to say that many of the good things that the districts and boroughs carried out have been lost as a consequence of the need to fund social care. One of the benefits of devolution is that at least there is that strategic view that still enables us to do the kind of great regeneration work that's happening now in Andover and Romsey, for example, and other places around the county, to place that in the combined authority as the changes come about. So, it is, you know, a fact that we have a stark choice in front of us today. Andy made some great points about being cross-boundary. There are lots of places in this county where we look cross-boundary for all sorts of things. In my own division, many of the residents of East and West Titherley, of East Dean, of Lockley, look to Salisbury for all of their services. The fact is that we work within boundaries that have been set for a long time. We can't change those boundaries easily, because, as we've said before, when we're talking about BCP, the public service footprint places upon it. And I think Kim makes a great point around the fact that there are islands of deprivation amongst the sea of affluence that we find in our county. And that is a really important point for us all to remember, and those are the people on those islands who are currently isolated from the services they need, that we need to focus upon at this point. Sustainability is absolutely at the core of what we need to do, Peter, and that needs to be very much at the centre of our thoughts about local government reorganisation. It's the role of the county council to look at the costs of those proposals that come forward and help understand what that sustainability looks like. We are indeed in a competitive situation with other counties, Stephen, so you're right that we need to be really careful about the ask that we put forward. Fran's benefits of devolution were well put, and Jonathan, I'm glad that we finally find some cross-party harmony with the socialists for you, but I'm slightly worried that you think I'm like Edward Smith, the captain of the Titanic. Or it could be Carolyn, I'm not sure which one of us is Leonardo and which one of us is Rose, but I'm the one sinking, I can be sure, assure you of that. Malcolm, the mayor, the mayor and the combined authority, the point about the mayor is that they would have to work alongside the combined authority, so it's not all about putting power in one person's hand, and that's, that's an experience that we've had elsewhere or that we've heard from elsewhere. And it's important, again, to find the time to make sure that we get that structure, to get that governance right, so that we ensure that we, in council chambers, whatever they might look like in the future, have that power to control things. Stephen's right about costing billions. It will cost an awful amount of money. It will also be a huge disruption and provide enormous uncertainty. And that uncertainty comes, as Pam says, from taking different, taking local government away from people and taking it much further away. So, again, we have to make sure that we get that right, particularly around the planning concerns that we talked about as well. And we need to get that right, and we need to focus upon the vulnerable people. Gavin, I look forward to the fact that you'll be looking, you'll be representing, hopefully, Romsey Far North in any future council. It is rushed, you're right, but that Greater Manchester model being put on us is a great example of why we need to, again, spend our time making sure that we're not taking on a footprint of Greater Manchester or a blueprint of Greater Manchester. We're creating something for ourselves, and creating the time is the important reason and why we need to make that space to be able to do so. The changes will be agreed by the time of the next election, I hope. They will be agreed by May 2026, and that's exactly when we should be holding our election. Smaller unitaries, Jonathan, are exactly, from my personal perspective, the way to go. We need to make sure they're uncertain, that they're sustainable though, and that comes back to our role in doing so. And again, that comes back to that fact of making sure that we've got the whole, not yet, at the end, Liz, so nearly there though, so. Jackie, who you vote for matters, but what you vote for matters as well, and we need to be clear about what we're voting for. We need to be clear in this chamber, but we also need to make time to ensure that the people out there understand what they're going to be voting for in the future. And Adrian, I have to say, your points about being against that boundary were really well put. It is always a challenge to be up against somewhere where everybody looks elsewhere, and it comes back to that point about the need to ensure that we are representing our residents as best as we can within that framework. Mark, as always, eloquent around the pension fund, and that's symptomatic of why we need to get whatever changes come forward right and how we need to take as much time as we possibly can to do that in terms of looking at local government, as indeed the benefit of working together, as Juliette mentioned in Dock South, was that. And Louise, Lou, I think, thank you for highlighting the most vulnerable people, because that is the most important thing for us, and they're the people that we need to remember most when talking about the changes that we're putting forward today. They are the people who will be impacted most. They are the people who must be at the forefront of our thinking. Malcolm, I might be Captain Smith, I'm not sure, I'm a turkey, but there will eventually be votes on those final plans, of that I can assure you. So, it's not about having this vote today and then never, never talking about it again. There will be plenty of opportunities as we go forward. As to hurdle Drew. As to hurdler Drew, well, you learn something new every day about your colleagues, but you're absolutely right to focus on those different steps that we need to go along. Alex, thank you for highlighting all of the different benefits as well. And I look forward to utilising all of those great relationships that you're talking about with your government departments, so that we can make sure we get this right. Maybe there, Mike made an excellent contribution about highlighting the uncertainty that would come with an election deferral. Because how would we decide when we actually held that election and what would happen? And similarly, Mark, putting the staff at the forefront of our thinking is equally something that we must do. And Jan, in a sense, I thought you kind of got me down to a T because you did talk about Tylistly, which, as you know, I normally spend much of my time Tylis, if I possibly can, rather than today. But I'm so glad to be still with you, and thank you for your support through all of this. And finally, Marge and Martin. Marge, you've got two parish councils, I've got 14. Juliette's got 24. David's got 21, I think. So we all know how well and how hard parish councillors work. It will change, and Keith is absolutely right to highlight them in these proposed amendments. The point is, though, that that's all the point, that's all something that we should be thinking about as the, as we get closer to that discussion about local government reform. Putting it in now risks us not being accepted on the programme and us not having the influence that we might wish to have around that. And Martin, the risks you highlight perfectly. And they are risks, and this is a step into the unknown, as I talked about earlier. I found myself in many, on a number of occasions, actually, in the last few weeks, in the same place as Baroness Taylor, who's the local government minister with whom we've spoken most. And very kindly, Martin reminded me that the exchequer was removed from Winchester in 1126. And I was able to remind her on a number of occasions that perhaps they'd like to give us some of the money back so that we wouldn't need to be worrying so much about all these different issues. But sadly, we can't. And that's about, when it comes to worrying, I think that's what we need to do. We need to be able to worry, we need to worry about the things that we can influence, and we need to just accept the things that we can't. And we can't influence the fact that this is happening. We might all be unhappy, we might all be upset, we might all be worried, we might all be concerned for our residents about these proposals. But they are proposals put forward by a government that has a majority of almost 200 in the House of Commons. So they are happening, whether we like them or not, and so far better that we are at the table. The amendment as put around the elections doesn't give a time at which we call the election, and that, I think, worries me as well. Not only does it need primary legislation in parliament to make that change, but it also means how would we decide when, when that point came where we should call the election? And I have to say, we received some helpful advice from Portsmouth City Council last night in their motion. They added an amendment that suggested that we might wish to consider doing that in very similar terms to the amendment that Keith put forward today. Cheeky. And so we, but that's the point. And part of their amendment talked about us being more focusing upon voting than on delivering these different plans. And in fact, I think we deliver these plans better by knowing that we're postponing for a year. We can focus upon it, our staff can focus upon it, and we can ensure that we get the decisions right, both around the governance and the structure and the powers of that new combined authority and that mayoralty, and also to give ourselves as much time as we possibly can to get the local government reorganisation proposals right as well. And finally, there are just a few thank yous I'd like to say. Thank you to those of you in this chamber who thought that you would, your terms would, might be coming to an end in May. I recognise that there are a number of you who thought you were about to retire, and for many of those that I've spoken to, you've said that you will continue for a further year. I recognise that that means a further commitment to public service and a further commitment by those of you who were having that thought to consider how you can best serve the people of Hampshire through this really difficult time. And I don't, I don't underestimate the, the challenge that that brings. Thank you too to our staff, and particularly to Gary and Carolyn and Rob. If I've worked tirelessly, they've worked until they are sort of worn down by this. We, we have had a long journey to this point. It didn't start on December the 16th, it started in June. And that's when the final thank you comes to Steve and to Phil and to Lorna, who are the leaders of Portsmouth and the Isle of Wight and Southampton in, respectively. One is Lib Dem, one is independent, one is Labour. And as four different leaders from four different parties, we have worked, I think, really well together. They have been patient, they have been kind, they have been focused upon the outcome that is right for all of our residents, regardless of where they might live. And so thank you to all of you for your, for your time today. I commend the original motion to you, but I'm afraid because of the risks of us not reaching that programme, that priority programme, I cannot support the amendments as put. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, leader. We now come to the voting part of the, this particular item. And first of all, we will vote on the amendment produced by councillor House and seconded by councillor Todd. And that's the amendment, is it as well?
The amendment is in part, so it would make sense to do that, chairman. I assume, I thought that's what would have been agreed in advance, sorry.
Yes, yeah. Doing amendment A, voting on amendment A, then on the real A, amendment B.
Right, thank you.
It's just amendment A.
Yes, right. Just so you're clear what we're doing, first of all, it's all done electronically, and I think you're all familiar with the process. So first of all, as it regards the recommendations, we will be voting on the amendment to A, and then subsequently, we'll be voting on the, on A, as it is on your order paper, with or without the amendment, including depending upon the first vote. So first of all, we'll have the amendment as it applies to A in the recommendations. Joe, have we got all the votes in as far as we can see? I think we've got all the votes in, and the amendment is, is lost on recommendation A. So can we now vote on recommendation A, the substantive motion, without the amendment? Has everybody voted? And recommendation, little brackets, A, is passed.
My understanding was when the recorded votes were up, we would actually see who was voting at the time? How does, how does that work? Or do we just find out afterwards?
We should be able to display it. So we should be able to display. We'll do it now. We'll display them now.
Joe?
Joe, can we also do that, put the amendment details up as well?
She's just going to get the amendment details put up as well, so people can see how they voted on the amendment.
Yep. That is on the substantive motion, but we'll now put up the voting intention, the voting for the amendment that was lost. Yeah. And that's going up now. We're not able to bring that particular vote up on the screen, but it will be circulated afterwards for the amendment. So moving on to B, am I right in saying that there was no amendment to B? So on B, we're just voting on the substantive motion as it was on your papers. So on B, the county council will request to be included in the devolution priority programme. Has everyone voted? And all the results are on the screen? Not yet. Joe, can you just make certain that I know which votes are on the screen, whether they're the previous ones or these ones? It's now. It's on the screen, right. And these are the individual results for the B. And, and the motion is passed, B, that is. So can we now move on to C? And here, we're voting initially on the amendment to C. And that's the individual results. So the motion, the amendment is defeated on C. And now we'll vote on the substantive C without the amendment. Has everyone voted? So the...
When we went to do that vote and we discovered the previous one was already on the screen, I voted a different way on that amendment than I did on the previous vote. I want to know if my record of previous vote is correct.
Joe, can you devise on that one? As we're doing that, recommendation C is passed. Recommendation in little, little C is passed. And now we can move on to D, and we're voting initially on the amendment.
I think they might be a little bit behind on the electronic side because they're trying to sort out that question.
Actually, I didn't realise we were voting the individual ones.
We always have done in the past, I don't know why we didn't. It's what we've, when it started, we put the...
Do you mean?
Yeah, because if you read it out, then to the public, you see...
No, no, I take the point.
So I'm just going to say, we're recording the votes correctly, we're recording, but if you want to double check it, we'll check it later. We'll do that.
And as soon as we're up and running, we'll do the amendment, voting on the amendment for D. This is the amendment for D that we're voting on. Have you all voted? The amendment for D is defeated. We'll now get the names on the screen, and then we'll move on to the last vote. And the final vote is on the substantive recommendation in D. If you could all vote for and against or abstain on that one. And that recommendation, the last one on D, is passed. And the names are going on the screen. And councillor Collett, I've been assured that the actual record includes your two votes. Yeah, right. Sounds, yes, yes, yes. Well, I think that concludes our historic council meeting. Certainly the most important council meeting, I would suggest, for decades, if not centuries. And just may I follow the thanks the leader and others gave to all councillors for what I consider, after over 40 years voting in councils and in the House of Commons, this was probably the most well-informed, high-quality, grown-up, well-mannered debate that I've attended. So thank you all very much indeed.